Welcome to the January 24, 2023 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Dolan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join me as we come together in each of our own spiritual traditions to give thanks and to ask for guidance as we meet in these chambers to address the challenges facing our community in prayer. Once again, we ask to be reminded of our commitment to our community and for guidance through our discussions so that we may be productive. We ask for the broadening of our minds so that we may listen without bias and the deepening of our compassion so that we may consider the impact of our words and actions. Help us to make informed decisions on the issues brought before us. Help us to be respectful and resolve disputes gracefully. Help us to be creative problem solvers using the principles that speak to the needs of the citizens that we serve. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and thank you for the community in which we serve. Let us be mindful of and express our gratitude for this extraordinary community in which we live, work, and play. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alicia, she's not here? Okay. Did you want to go ahead?
I guess before you start, just hopefully we can amend the agenda like we discussed earlier this afternoon.
Okay, go ahead.
To add that item.
Did you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yes, like to... Hopefully by consent, we can add that and amend the agenda to add the opt-in versus opt-out policy.
Okay, we're amending the... Do you want to make a motion to do that?
That would be under general business, most likely.
Okay.
So if there is consensus and is agreement by everyone, you don't need a motion. But if there is an objection, need to have a motion second and a vote to amend the agenda tonight.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Yep. Can we have any discussion to amend the agenda?
Is there any opposition? Do we need... Okay, that's fine. So just for clarification for the record, the agenda would be amended... If this motion passes, it would be amended to include a proposed letter or one of the proposed letters presented by Councilman Missions as it relates to the school board issue brought up previously.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So I do not support that. I want to hear from the school board.
So that's why there's a motion. Good.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote then?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and vote, please. Okay, motion passes. Five to two. It will be on the agenda. Under general business, please. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into three sections: public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure is staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Agenda item number two: consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan to reduce homelessness and increase housing stability. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request by Mr. Kent White. Hello.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. During your January 10 meeting, you heard an overview from Ms. Marjorie Willow with Mullen and Lungeran Associates about funding that's available from the Department of Housing and Urban Development's home program to assist persons in exiting homelessness. Ms. Willow is with us this evening and will provide a brief overview of the proposed allocation plan and the next steps that would follow should you adopt the plan for your public hearing. And then, of course, we're happy to answer any questions following your hearing. So with that, I'll introduce Ms. Willow.
So this brief presentation is being presented because this is a public hearing and for all of those in attendance tonight. And this public hearing is on the city's proposed home ARP allocation plan that will be submitted to HUD if approved. And the home ARP program is a carve-out of the much larger Home ARPA program that the city received multi-millions of dollars. And for this specific program, Lynchburg is receiving just under $1.5 million. It's a very... The qualifying populations for receiving funds through this program are very, very limited. And they include four categories: the homeless, those who are at risk of homelessness, those who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. And then the fourth group is what we just called a catch-all group because it's other populations who might not qualify under those three categories, but they meet one of these criteria. These are families requiring services or housing assistance to prevent them from becoming homeless, as well as those who are at greatest risk of housing instability. So as a result of the data collection and all of the stakeholder interviews that we conducted, the following budget is being proposed with these activities. As you can see, there are several activities that do not have a line item amount, and all of these are eligible activities: supportive services, acquisition, development of non-congregate shelter, tenant-based rental assistance, and so on. And because the city is receiving just under $1.5 million and the need is so great, it was recognized that they could use the funds to... They wouldn't be able to use the funds to address all those needs, and so they've decided to put their funding into the development of affordable rental housing and also planning and administration of the program. And specifically, the city plans to partner with a local nonprofit organization or a housing provider to develop affordable rental units, sort of in the model of Old Forest Village and the new Florida Terrace projects that are located in Lynchburg. So just to give you an idea of what happens after tonight, the city anticipates submitting this plan to HUD by January 31 at the end of the month. HUD is allowed to take 45 or 60 days to review the plan and approve it. Following that, with HUD's approval, city staff will prepare a request for proposals for the construction of the rental housing. And the RFP will be issued. The community development staff will review the proposals that are received, and then that review and city staff's comments will go to the Community Development Advisory Committee, CDAC, who will review those proposals. And eventually, City Council will review CDAC's recommendation and ultimately approve a project. And at this time, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be available for questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Timothy Santiago, Lynchburg City. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As someone that volunteered and still sporadically volunteers with two different homeless shelters in this city, I see a great need of housing and a great need for just money. That is one of the biggest cries that I overhear because I just... I'll sit and have lunch with someone, or I'll just be listening. And it's money, money, money. So while I ask that you approve the plan, I also just ask that we be mindful of how we spend this money. Even though it's a grant money, it's still money that's being given to us into this government to assist our citizens. So I ask that you be mindful in how we spend money in the future and how we consider asking for money in the future because if we're seeing the same results constantly, what are we doing? The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again but expecting a different result. And I feel that while I have a great love for the city, that's what we're doing when it comes to the housing problem here, for affordable housing. We're doing the same thing over and over and over but expecting a different result. So I support the city and the current plan that it has. I just ask that you please consider every time that you take grant money to see how we're actually spending the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Shawn Farmer, and I'm the Executive Director of Interfaith Outreach Association. I'm here tonight as a board member of the Central Virginia Continuum of Care. I support the plan's identified priority activity of creating more housing for those experiencing homelessness. For over 40 years, Interfaith Outreach has worked with families in need. We currently operate the community's homeless prevention program, and I know and see firsthand the importance of affordable housing in preventing individuals and families from experiencing homelessness. On a daily basis, Interfaith Outreach works with families on the brink of becoming homeless with no affordable housing currently available in our community. What can affordable housing do for our neighbors in need in Lynchburg? It gives people a chance. It will allow more people to be able to focus on improving their lives and well-being. This stability and support creates opportunities for families to improve their lives in areas such as education, economic security, and health. Affordable housing changes lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I am Tab Robertson. I'm here tonight as a board member and as the president of the Central Virginia Continuum of Care. I am also the portfolio director of case management at Horizon Behavioral Health. I do support the Home ARP's plan's identified priority activity of creating more housing for those experiencing homelessness. In case management, we work with individuals with mental health, substance use, and developmental disabilities and gaining access to needed medical, social, educational, and other services and supports. In my more than 20 years of doing this work, one of the most difficult things has always been trying to find available and affordable housing for our clients, and in the last decade it's become even harder. And just looking at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, it is important to take care of the physiological needs such as homelessness before we can ever hope to truly assist someone with their behavioral health needs. In 2022, due to our belief that everyone deserves housing, Horizon Behavioral Health received funding for a permanent supportive housing program and a grant for the benefit of homeless individuals. Each of these programs provide housing-related services and rental assistance to individuals with mental illness in order to secure and maintain affordable housing. While it is great for our community to have these two programs, they too are struggling to find the available and affordable housing. Through my case manager work in the continuum of care, I am very aware of the need for more housing that is... that needs to be available and affordable for those who are homeless and hope that more will be created to support our community's needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Pat Young. I'm the Senior Director of Community Health Services at Centra Health, and I'm here today as a board member of the Central Virginia Continuum of Care. As the largest health system in the region, we feel the impact of those experiencing homelessness every day. Often, our emergency rooms are inundated with those who have health issues that have been left untended for years. Sometimes, they're in our emergency departments because it's too hot or too cold outside and they have no place to go, and they need a meal and a warm blanket. If they are sick enough to be admitted to the hospital, they often remain beyond the date when they would normally be discharged because they have no safe place to go and rest and recover. The Home ARP program is an incredibly essential part of the safety net for those who are experiencing homelessness, and it provides the funds and the resources to increase access to safe and affordable housing for those who have no place to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Kristin Nolan. I'm the Director of Housing Services at Miriam's House. We offer a variety of programs that provide rental assistance and wraparound support services to homeless households. I've been working directly with people experiencing homelessness for the last 10 years. I strongly support the draft plan's recommendation to develop affordable, safe, and decent rental housing for the homeless population. Over the last several years, as our programs have worked to move more and more homeless households into housing, finding units has become very challenging. Rent costs have drastically increased. Units that are affordable and inhabitable condition have become more scarce, and this ultimately means that people experience homelessness for longer periods of time. Having more units targeted to the population that we serve means that we can quickly move homeless households out of shelter or off of the streets and into homes. Once housed, we have the staff that can wrap supportive services around them, including assistance with budgeting, tenancy education, employment assistance, connections to education and training programs, establishing healthcare and mental health services, and other referrals tailored to the needs, but we need the units for them to live in. We aim to prevent returns to homelessness, and currently, 98% of the families that we serve do not become homeless again. I ask that you support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Sarah Quarantoto. I'm the Executive Director of Miriam's House. I support the plan's identified priority to create more affordable housing for those experiencing homelessness. Miriam's House has been addressing the needs of our homeless neighbors for the past 30 years, and the need has grown tremendously. Last year, in 2022, we served more of our homeless neighbors than in any previous year and moved 462 individuals and children off the streets, out of shelter, and into the safety of a home. The creation of more housing will allow us to even serve even more of our homeless neighbors and ensure that they're out of shelter, off the street, in the safety of home, which, of course, provides opportunity for every other area of life. I ask that you support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I do not want to butcher your last name, so...
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Brian Meade. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Roads to Recovery. I am here tonight as a board member of the Central Virginia Continuum of Care, and I support the plan's identified priority activity of creating more housing for those experiencing homelessness. Roads to Recovery currently operates the area's only no-barrier homeless shelter, and we are very much aware of the need for more housing that is available and affordable for our people that are homeless. We are still early in our experience with serving this population, but the single largest barrier we are encountering with our residents of our shelter is that of finding them affordable, stable housing for the next step in their lives. They... When I was preparing for the night, a story came to mind immediately of a gentleman that's in the shelter right now. This gentleman works a full-time job, 40 hours a week. He gets himself there on the bus. He walks back at night because he's on second shift. The bus isn't running. He works. He's not someone that's not putting in the effort. And him, he's having a really difficult time finding affordable housing, although with all our help, we hope that that will be possible. But the options are very limited, especially ones that are on the bus line and that he can walk back from on a second shift job. So I just ask that you think about that when you vote tonight and support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meade.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Todd Blake, and I'm the Executive Director at Parkview Community Mission. And on behalf of Parkview, I want to lend our support for the Home ARP allocation plan. In 2022, our Community Resource Center addressed needs through 327 financial assistance forms submitted, 9,746 calls taken, and countless direct interactions with neighbors in need. Compare that to 5,000 individual contacts documented in 2021. We've seen a 700% increase in assistance requests since 2019, when our Community Resource Center opened. The needs in Lynchburg, particularly around housing, are only increasing. You can't spend a day at Parkview without meeting neighbors who are experiencing homelessness or in danger of homelessness. We meet neighbors who are homeless and having a difficult time over a long period of time trying to get into safe housing. We meet families who are struggling to make ends meet. They're struggling to pay increasingly high rental payments. They're making difficult decisions around what to pay for: rent, food, medical care, and so on and so on. This plan will have a direct and positive impact on the neighbors that we serve and on the city of Lynchburg. And I promise that Parkview will partner with the city and everyone else involved to provide resources like food, clothing, education around job skills, financial management, and maintaining their homes. So thank you for considering this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Paul Robertson. I'm a board member of the Central Virginia Continuum of Care. Through my work with the Continuum of Care, I am aware of the need for more available and affordable housing in this community for folks experiencing homelessness. I support the plan's identified priority of creating more housing for those experiencing homelessness with the funds received through the Home American Rescue Plan. The lack of affordable housing in Lynchburg has deep, deep-running and wide-reaching effects and touches all of us whether each of us realizes it or not. The lack of affordable housing negatively affects the ability of the homeless response system to rehouse homeless and at-risk individuals, and this puts a greater strain on that system and the available resources in our community for helping the homeless or those at risk of homelessness. An increase in affordable housing in this community would help those programs operate more effectively and more efficiently. Beyond that, the lack of affordable housing contributes to a lack of housing stability. When folks aren't stably housed, it puts a greater strain on our city's schools, our hospitals, and our support agencies. Further, the lack of affordable housing often affects our most vulnerable neighbors, including the elderly, the disabled, and those attempting to flee from situations of domestic violence. Without safe, affordable housing, those vulnerable populations are forced oftentimes to stay in potentially unsafe situations in order to try and avoid homelessness. Of the potential uses for the funds, using the funds for the development of affordable housing stands to make the greatest impact and would best complement the support services that already exist in the community to assist these households. For these reasons and the reasons set forth in the proposal, I urge council to adopt the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Chelsea Tomlin. I am the Secretary of the Board for Continuum of Care. I'm also the Director of Operations for Johnson Health Center. And Johnson Health Center is the city of Lynchburg and surrounding counties federally-qualified health center. So we provide primary care, mental health, dental, OB, and pharmacy services to homeless individuals and families. And last year, we had 73 of our patients self-identify as homeless. 50% of our patients, which was over 27,000 last year, 50% of them fell below 100% of the federal poverty level, which means it's pretty likely that their basic necessities such as housing are not being met. We also collect what's called a life challenges form, and we do this annually on all of our patients, and it helps us determine the social determinants of health: what else is going on outside of healthcare that's affecting their health outcomes? And last year, the top three were: one was food, two was transportation, and three was housing. And so we see through our work every day how affordable and available housing is crucial to positive health outcomes. And so tonight, I'm here in support of the proposed plan to create more affordable housing for Lynchburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Sarah Fuentes, and for the last four and a half years, I have served as the homeless system coordinator at Miriam's House for the Central Virginia Continuum of Care. Miriam's House is the backbone agency for the homeless coalition and leads the coordination of all homeless services in the city of Lynchburg and the four surrounding counties. In addition to ensuring all homeless services are coordinated, I supervise the Our Communities' Homeless Hotline. Every day, the hotline receives dozens and dozens of calls from our neighbors experiencing a housing crisis. Many have been faithful tenants for years, and the owner of the unit of the rental has decided not to renew the lease and is selling the property. Some have a way to pay their rent, but all available units are just out of range of affordability. Some have had to take rentals that they could afford, and now they are without heat or water or there's a leak in the ceiling that the landlord won't remedy. The overwhelming message we hear from callers is that there isn't enough affordable housing for everyone in our community. The homeless system is designed to respond to folks who have nowhere else to go, but in order to end their homeless episode, our community needs more safe and affordable housing. That is why I am in full support of the Home ARP allocation plan, and I am asking you to approve the plan as it is written to allocate all of the funds to the creation of affordable housing in our community to serve all of our households experiencing homelessness. It is one step closer to ensuring that all of our neighbors have access to safe and decent and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuentes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. I am Tim Saunders, and I'm here tonight as a board member of the Central Virginia Continuum of Care, asking you to support the Home ARP plan. In my professional life in workforce development, I talk to businesses every day, and you're well aware, I'm sure, of the fact that our businesses are really struggling to find workers. They still are. Even in 2023, we're still seeing situations where our employers are needing to find workers, especially those who maybe don't necessarily have a long work background, a strong work background, to fill many of our jobs here in the city. Lynchburg is the anchor when it comes to employment in our region. Most of the jobs are here in your city. At the same time, we are talking to job seekers every day who would like to work in Lynchburg, but they're facing barriers that are preventing them from living close to where they would like to work. And so by creating this housing, you are diversifying your workforce. You're creating an opportunity to diversify that workforce and bring workers into the city who will fill those jobs and those vacancies that so desperately need to be filled. So I do respectfully ask for you to support this plan as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Michelle Bowman. I'm here as a citizen and also a homeless outreach worker. I see firsthand every day what folks go through in their search for affordable housing, so I just want to encourage you to support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeremy White. I'm an attorney here in Lynchburg. I own and operate my own solo practice, and I'm also on the board of the Continuum of Care. As a part of my practice, both currently and in the past, I have seen the effects of housing, particularly that housing that is not safe in our community. And so while the thrust of this and the labels on this particular plan are on affordability, what I think is one of the most important components of that is that it's also going to be safe, inhabitable housing. One of the other speakers mentioned problems with no heat and no water. I just had one of those problems in those cases last year. The landlord refused, kept turning off the water. Landlord refused to put heat in the place. Well, it was affordable, but it was completely unsafe and unlivable for this woman or children. So that, to me, is one of the most important components. The other component is housing stability. What families need that are exiting from experiencing homelessness is that opportunity to establish that baseline of housing stability. Out of that baseline of stability, then we can flow from there: job stability, healthcare stability, school stability for the kids. Families hopping around from place to place, place that's not safe, they have to leave; place that's not affordable, they can't stay. It just breeds problems. This continues to provide solutions, and I ask that you support the ARP plan as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Jeff Smith, and I have the privilege of serving as Executive Director of Rush Homes. As you know, Rush Homes creates affordable housing in the Lynchburg region. Since 1996, we've developed 99 homes, nearly all fully accessible for persons with mobility impairments. We're in construction now of 31 additional homes, scheduled to lease up in midsummer if it ever dries out. We've worked for 27 years in support of successful housing for people with a wide range of disabilities, so I believe we can claim some experience in this area. What you may not know is that we also are providers of housing for persons with disabilities exiting homelessness. Since the early 2000s, we've provided 12 units of housing on a regular basis for persons requiring permanent supportive housing. When Florida Terrace comes online this summer, we will make eight more apartments available with the support of LRHA via project-based vouchers, and the Central Virginia Continuum of Care and Miriam's House, the latter contracting, to provide the support services. The Home ARP allocation plan before you tonight offers a well-thought-out, actually simple use of the funds to meet the needs of people who are homeless in our city. We know we do not have enough housing that is affordable in Lynchburg. We've known that for a long time. We've known that for a long time. It's an understatement and a drag on our economy for a number of reasons. The planned document makes all of this very clear. The plan states unequivocally in Section 7 that the priority of ARP funding needs to be the development of affordable, accessible rental housing and rental permanent supportive housing with a strong service component. On behalf of Rush Homes, I fully endorse the plan. The plan indicates a hope of developing five to six units of housing. We believe we can do more with additional funding from outside sources. First, though, we need to fully use the approximately $1.35 million for new housing development for PSH, as is also in the plan, and again, I fully endorse the plan. It's Rush Homes' hope to acquire some or all of this funding to make this housing possible. Again, we have experience, we have the support, and we look forward to the possible opportunity. Thank you for this opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any emails or phone calls?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I received an email from Evelyn Jordan. I will now read it to the record. It says, "I, Evelyn S. Jordan, work with supportive services of veteran families in your community and surrounding areas. I wholeheartedly support the city receiving and setting a plan to have available low-income affordable housing. Currently, housing is a big concern with our SSVF services as we provide referrals to supportive services for our veterans, help with financial supports for our veterans, and seek affordable housing for our veterans paying their security deposit, first month's rent, and utilities to get them on their feet. It is very hard to house our veterans since rent has gone up drastically in your community. After emergency COVID funds from 2020 to 2021, we have not received any more funds to pay for motels for homeless veterans when the Salvation Army is full, which is very often, yet we do not want the veterans on your streets. Your community also needs a low-barrier shelter for everyone, especially since Link Hags closing, as you are accepting these funds and deciding their use. I encourage City Council to accept these funds and use them for your community as they need is very high. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Okay, wonderful. Well, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with Council.
Vice Mayor Fraldi, yes. Just checking, because I know that we've held this over for some time, and I want to know just for certain that now we adopt it, right? Because we held it for two meetings, and I know there's a range, how long we have to hold it, so just we're all on the same page. With that in mind, I'll move approval.
Second. Okay, great.
Yeah, in speaking to the motion, I think what I want to reiterate, at least for this consideration, is that this is a massive topic that government will never solve, but it plays an integral part into how we engage this conversation. I don't think throwing more money at an issue will inherently make it better. In fact, it might make it worse because maybe the red tape and how it's used. However, Lynchburg is not unique in how the issues of the day are impacting us when it relates to housing needs. We need more solutions. We need more affordable. We need more normal. We need more expensive. We need more everything to build out the city, to make folks want to move in. It's just there's a desperate need for it. So I think there's going to be other policies related to this conversation, not just this alone, that may be helpful from the local government perspective. But I think on a broad basis, we need more organizations like some of the organizations that came forward and spoke. The email spoke to the veteran population and what's going on with those brave men and women who've put so much before. They put sacrifice forward on our behalf. I think we need more organizations like the Veterans Council and the great work they do in finding housing solutions. We need more churches to step forward. We need more community groups to get involved and say, you know what? This is not just council's issue to address, but it's a citywide thing. I know Councilmember Wilder speaks to that on many fronts. And so I make this motion knowing that, from my perspective, this will not solve the issue, but it will, I hope, advance the matter. And I really, really want to call on all members of this city to say, how can we get involved with some of these organizations to make significant change happen? Because it's not going to just happen from the seven of us pushing a green button, but I hope it does make an impact. Thank you.
Yes, our second motion, I'm excited to support this project. You know, one thing about Lynchburg, Lynchburg is a caring community, and when I see so many great nonprofits come together to support one another, to support a common cause, it shows me what Lynchburg is made of, and that's the Lynchburg that I love and the Lynchburg I grew up in. You know, when I look about like park commissions and all the rapid roll services also with Miriam's House, you know, not just providing housing, but they provide rapid roll services from clothing closets to job training programs to counseling programs, which are those rapid roll services which are needed, but can break some of those barriers of poverty and make change in our community. So I'm so thankful that we have a program like this, our community, that we can support and use these funds to give them housing. We saw firsthand when the situation at James Crossing, when that one unit was shut down, there were like 10 or so, 12 or so families that were left homeless with nowhere to go because the rental fees were so expensive, they could not go anywhere. So they were pretty much homeless and living in cars and living in hotels until they got put out of there to other places. So it shows how important we have such a strong need for more affordable housing in our community. So we are so blessed to have so many great organizations working together, and that's what makes Lynchburg great and strong, and I'm so honored to be a part of that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tomlin.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your work with this initiative, and it is just great to see all these organizations coming together to work on this. This is huge in our community. And, you know, we heard from people tonight that are experts in this field. They are the boots-on-the-ground people that know a whole lot more about this issue than any of us sitting up here, and I will be totally supportive, and I thank all of you for everything that you're doing for the homeless and the people that need help in this area. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Missions?
I want to thank all you guys for coming out tonight, and I've got a little bit of a different perspective because I once was the boots-on-the-ground working for the fire department, and I've seen the impact that what you guys do makes. I just wanted to thank you for that.
Anyone else? No? Well, I also really appreciate all of you showing up and sharing your passion. I've gotten to meet with several of you, and I've heard your heart and seen your hard work, so thank you so much. I think we will all be happy to cast our vote, so go ahead. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, before our next, we get to number three, I want to go back because I wanted to, I was supposed to do a recognition at first, and the person I was recognizing was not here, so she's here. We have a special guest here tonight, Ms. Samaria Lambeth. Please stand. She is a member of our Mayor's Youth Council and is a senior this year at Heritage High School. This is Samaria's second year with the Mayor's Youth Council and currently serves as our president. Thank you for being here, Samaria. Okay, you get to go. Yes.
We have another member of the council who snuck in the back, Caroline Corbett. Do you want to stand up too?
Yay. Thank you also for being here. Okay, now we can resume. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as part of the City of Lynchburg's Comprehensive Plan 2013 through 2030. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council. This master plan is the result of a huge effort, really, by our Parks and Recreation Department over the past two years. Shout out to the staff and Director Jenny Jones, who's in the audience behind me, including a very robust community outreach portion of that effort. The master plan establishes a clear vision for the future as well as goals and objectives for Lynchburg's park system. And while the plan sets the vision, it's a working and flexible document that staff would implement over time using various funding sources. The Parks and Rec Master Plan was presented to Council at its work session on December 13, 2022. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on December 14 and recommended that the plan be adopted as part of our comprehensive plan. And at Council's last meeting on January 10, the public hearing was opened and held open to today's meeting at Council's request. And at that meeting, we did hear a couple of citizen concerns that I'd like to quickly address. First, there was a concern over a lack of new park facilities in Ward Four. The plan actually proposes two new neighborhood parks there and a new, larger community park just over the boundary line with Ward Three. Second was about the maintenance at Heritage Park. Most of that park, including the field in the building, is actually under schools' maintenance. Staff is working to address this concern by working with LCS to actually bring stewardship of the park under our Parks and Rec Department, which would allow for more frequent maintenance. And third, there was a question of whether the new trail connections and greenways would be adequately utilized. Staff feels very confident that the answer to this question is yes. Based on the data that we have, our trails are seeing about 500,000 visits per year, and that number probably doesn't even capture everything because we don't have trail counters at every trailhead. Additionally, there are many outside funding sources available for projects like trails and greenways. Staff has successfully pursued those before and would continue to do so. Thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Freshheisen. Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, excuse me, Members of Council. I'd like to begin wishing my council representative a happy birthday. While I appreciate, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Beth White. I live in the Fort Hill area, have lived there for almost 30 years. While I appreciate and approve of the overall master plan, I do have a concern regarding the Ford Avenue section. According to Page 70 of the plan, which shows that I did read all 174 pages of the plan, according to Page 70 of the plan, under the heading "Inner Loop Phase Two Improvements", Subparagraph Three discusses proposed improvements to Ford Avenue to include turning the current four-lane road into two travel lanes, a center turn lane, two dedicated bike lanes, a curb and grass planting strip, and continuous sidewalks. A study that was conducted by VDOT and published on December 13, 2022, found that during the 2015-2019 period of time, there were 221 accidents on Ford Avenue, with 204 of them occurring between Memorial Ave. and the Wards Road intersections. I, as I said, I've lived in the Fort Hill area, specifically on Oak Ridge Boulevard, for almost 30 years. I remember as a teenager and young adult on my way to work at what used to be Fort Hill and Dixie, riding along Ford Avenue when it was a two-lane road, and there being a very steady amount of traffic at that time. That was during 1985 to 1990. Since then, the road has grown to the four lanes that we see today. The CSO project resulted in curbs being built and sidewalks placed where there previously were not any. And yet, despite all of these improvements, it is still a heavily-traveled road. Before I became a work-from-home employee, my office was located on Ford Avenue, and it was not near any intersection. And so when you try to leave the parking lot between 4:30 and 5:00, there was no way you could make a left-hand turn to go home. I had to make a right-hand turn, turn again in front of Chestnut Hill Baptist Church, and then take backroads just to get home. At that time, when you add in the additional population, in the mid-'80s, it was 66,000 to current 81,000-plus, that's a lot more traffic. Again, I appreciate and approve of the overall master plan. I'm just concerned that if we tear up and reduce a four-lane road to a two-lane road as it was 35 years ago, it's just asking for more congestion, a higher amount of accidents, especially when you factor in any anticipated bike lanes. Again, I do appreciate, and I'm looking forward to what the city wants to do with its parks.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, Members of Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and friend from Rosie's violin class, Beth Fairhills. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with you my thoughts regarding Parks and Rec Master Plan. I've personally read the entire 270-page document outline and cannot even begin to describe how thrilled I am at what's being detailed out in this plan. My family and I moved to Lynchburg around 10 years ago from Arlington, Virginia, where we lived a carless lifestyle and did all of our commuting via public transport and the WNO Bike Trail, which is a commuter's trail. We moved to Lynchburg with the hope that the city would go the direction of being more walkable, and for us to be able to live the same lifestyle here, but at a more affordable cost, where we wouldn't have to be slaves to our mortgage. Over the past 10 years, we have played an active part in the downtown revitalization efforts by renovating houses, living and working in the historic district. We've recently finished renovating a 20,000-square-foot warehouse by Amazement Square that was potentially going to be demoed and turned into a parking lot and have been living there for the past six years. As one of the few families who live all the way downtown, I have to say, the possibilities of having river access, camping on Percival's Island, another riverfront park, and most importantly, more access points for the trail, and for the trail to connect all the major parts of downtown and Lynchburg as a whole, sounds like a dream and absolutely the type of city myself and so many others would love to call home. At present, the city has come leaps and bounds beyond what I ever thought it would, and getting the ball rolling on this master plan would be extremely instrumental in continuing our forward progress towards being a city where young people, families, and retirees would be able to live wholesome lifestyles where they could thrive. How exciting, Members of the Council, that you have come in during an incredibly significant season in the development of our city, that you hold within your hands the power to send us moving in the right direction, a direction that would encourage the lifestyle that some of the happiest people on earth enjoy, the Danish and Swedes, a direction of getting outside more, being able to commute via the Bike Trail to all the major areas of town, and being able to say goodbye to our cars in favor of a more sustainable and eco-friendly lifestyle, biking and walking. I encourage you today to vote in favor of this plan in its entirety. The public has contributed hundreds of hours of input into it, and there have been countless public meetings where everyone was allowed to have a voice. This plan is a compilation of all those hours spent developing this into a comprehensive master plan that reflects what we, the public, want. If you have personal pet projects that you would like to see happen in the future, I encourage you to have that be a side project and not halt the forward movement of bringing about what would continue to make our city an amazing place to play, work, and live. Thank you for your time.
What was your name again, please?
Katrina Marple.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marple.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of City Council. My name is Sandra Bowen, and I live in Ward Three. Been there for about 30 years. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts concerning the Parks Master Plan. I'm in agreement with a lot of the master plan, as long as it doesn't increase our taxes. My family enjoys the many trails and parks. One thing we greatly enjoy are the dirt trails, especially the Creekside Trails. Creekside runs from College Park area to the Dog Park and all the way to Hollins Mill. Creekside is a beautiful dirt trail that needs a lot of TLC. Parts of these trails have been closed for a long time, as there are downed trees blocking the paths, lots of overgrowth, and a number of washouts making access difficult. There were a few bridges which were used to cross over the other side of Blackwater Creek, where there are more trails. Now there's just one bridge. There is a Creekside Trail Restoration Project that City Council allocated funding for in 2020 and 2021 through the Capital Improvement Fund. It had new bridge designs, but it seemed to be held up due to permits and property easements. It is now 2023, and what I don't know is if that funding is still available for Creekside or if it is included or forgotten in this new master plan. On Page 43 of the master plan, it speaks of "natural resources highly desired." While we enjoy the asphalt trails, we also enjoy the dirt trails that really allow you to observe the beauty God has bountifully given to us in Lynchburg. It is a true treasure to enjoy the miles of both dirt and asphalt trails. On Page 63, it shows the gap analysis, and it doesn't appear to address the dirt trails, especially Creekside. On Page 67, Creekside is not included in the proposed service area. And on Page 95, it states that they are thinking, rethinking that the Dog Park as a natural area with an emphasis on natural floodplain restoration and protection. Does that mean that they are suggesting to close the Dog Park and potentially close the access to Creekside at this location? I don't know that either. So I'm asking that all the dirt trails be addressed, especially the Creekside Trails, in this massive proposal in order to preserve one of Lynchburg's many natural resources. And on a different note, on Page 70, where it talks about Ford Avenue potentially getting a road diet, I hope everyone here agrees that changing this already crowded four-lane stretch of road to a two-lane needs further thought, as this would be a definite inconvenience to thousands of drivers. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Okay, anyone here? Okay, anyone here want to speak in opposition? No? Okay, are there any emails or calls from citizens?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have received 26 emails that I will now read into the record. The first one is from Ladonna. It reads, "Just wanted to say that our parks and trails are a valuable city asset that benefit families, businesses that are trying to attract new employees, and all of our citizens. Current research indicates that time spent in nature has great health benefits, to say nothing of it being an affordable activity for all residents. I encourage the city to maintain and even expand our open spaces." The next is from Wally Blair of New Hampshire Avenue. It reads, "My name is Wally Blair, and I've been a citizen of Lynchburg since 2000. I consider the trails within the city of Lynchburg to be the best trail system of any city I've ever been to, and that includes several cities that are more noted for their trails. Their irreplaceable trails are directly tied to the health and well-being of many of Lynchburg's citizens and to a good measure of their positive social engagement, too. Our trails are an investment in the health and well-being of our citizenry, and considering they are already paid for, their maintenance is a tremendous bargain for the benefits received. I would urge a promotional campaign to let more people know about these uplifting treasures in our midst. Testimonials from trail walkers about what the trails mean to them posted on Facebook could also help. To reinforce my point, I would venture that if they put 'show our trails some love donation boxes at the Langquarn or Percival's Island Trailheads,' that substantial donations would be forthcoming. Of course, for the younger folks, a link to a Venmo-type donation account would be more practical. Please take a longer-term view on matters related to Lynchburg City Trail System." The next is an email from Tim Miles from Link Road. It reads, "I am the chairman of the Friends of Lynchburg Parks and Rec. I would like to add my voice in support of City Council's approval of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As we all know, Lynchburg has a fantastic park system and an excellent parks and recreation department that adds to the quality of life in Lynchburg. A large amount of effort has been put into the development of the master plan, with much input from Lynchburg citizens. The master plan is a great blueprint for the future improvements in our park system, and I support its approval by City Council. Thank you for your time." The next is from Connie Edwards. It reads, "I am a member of NBATC. I have also been a member of RATC for years, and I know more about that club. I am also a maintenance volunteer for RATC and a clean section of the AT at that Roanoke upkeeps. I am not paid for the time I spend picking up trash, cutting limbs, et cetera. I understand that club funds are used to make new bridges and steps if needed. Club dues can also help with gasses and chainsaws. I pay my dues to help with maintenance, and I also enjoy the trails and activities. Many club members volunteer their time to maintain the trail. As you well know, there are many hikers in the area, as well as through hikers. I think it is really nice to upkeep the trails. It also helps to prevent unneeded accidents on the trail. This is very important. I don't understand why anyone would want to cancel the upkeep of the AT. Hiking is great for mental and physical health. Nature is a God-given blessing that we should treat as a blessing and not ignore." The next is from Jeffrey Cornblum. It reads, "I am writing in regards to the Parks and Recreation current debate on the next 10-year plan. I am made to understand that there has been suggested no funding to be allocated to parks or trails. No funding to the parks or trails is, in my opinion, counter to the proper management of these public lands. State and federal lands are funded by the taxpayers and are used by many thousands of people annually. Many of the public lands were private at one time and claimed, backed by the government, along with large tracts of land across our nation, that was declared by the government to be protected land from development. The public nevertheless is able to enjoy these lands for a multitude of reasons, including, though not limited to hiking, biking, fishing, hunting, camping, et cetera. I believe Parks and Recreation has responsibility to continue funding to maintain the parks and trails." The next is from Laurel Foot from Lexington Drive. She writes, "I understand the Park and Recreation Office has developed a new master plan for the city. I would like to express my support of our Parks and Rec recreational programs, parks and trails. As a member of the Natural Bridge Appalachian Trail Club, which has long worked cooperatively with the city to develop new trails or maintain existing ones, I feel that trails are an important part of the quality of life and health benefits that trails offer our citizens. One of the reasons that people and businesses locate in a community is for the quality of life that area offers. I frequently use our trails, and I'm pleased to see the number and diversity of people out there enjoying nature, staying fit, and socializing with others on them. Please continue to promote and further develop these valuable city assets." The next is from Travis McDonald from Thomas Jefferson's Poplar Forest, writes, "I wanted to add my comment regarding the Parks Department future plans. For many years, I've used the Blackwater Creek Creekside and Freer Loop Trails just about every week. I think it is one of the best-kept secrets of Lynchburg. I've been patiently waiting for the three washed-out bridges to be repaired, and I see that the one most downstream is being rebuilt. I thoroughly endorse any future plans to maintain, extend, or build new hiking, biking trails. I work at Poplar Forest, and we would welcome a partnership with the city to implement our future trails, in addition to promoting the one that is now associated with our Parkway entrance off of Enterprise Drive. I also belong to the Appalachian Trail Club and join any of our members in supporting the future of trails in the city." The next is from Nora Cotts. It writes, "Hearing about the city master plan makes me feel the need to express my support for all the wonderful trails in our parks. Keeping the older trails and bridges safe and adding new access points and more miles to the system is definitely a good use of our public and grant funds. Most everyone I know in our area uses the trails fairly regularly. Birding, running, biking, dog walking, nature study, and just breathing. It's all very popular in Lynchburg. Please convey our support to the folks who make the decisions about the master plan. Trails are a priority for us." Number nine, this says, from Heidi James, VES Road, writes, "I am writing in support of the proposed master plan of the Parks and Recreation Department, especially the proposed expansion of the trail system, which is used by so many of our citizens as well as tourists on a daily basis. My husband and I ride our bikes at least weekly on the trails, and we always encounter tourists from other cities who have traveled to Lynchburg to ride or hike. We love our trails and are so grateful that the city has made them possible. But because our trail system is somewhat limited, we regularly travel to other cities to ride our bikes. We often go to Farmville to ride High Bridge Trail, to Nelson County to ride on the Virginia Blue Ridge Trail at Piney River, and we just travel to Abington to ride on the Virginia Creeper Trail. Everywhere we go, the trails are just swarming with cyclists and hikers. Outdoor recreation is a big business. Richmond has just added a 52-mile bike trail all the way to Colonial Williamsburg, and they market it by saying "the Virginia Capitol Trail" from downtown Richmond to the 18th century. Central Virginia has so much to offer in the way of natural beauty, and we also have so many significant historical sites nearby. We also have so many colleges. Expanding our trails to connect to Poplar Forest, Appomattox, Sweetbrier, Liberty University, University of Lynchburg, and to other cities with trails would make Lynchburg even more attractive as a tourist destination, thereby increasing revenues for the city. Let's keep improving and expanding our great bike trail system. It makes good economic sense for our city." This next is from Gary Nero from Lynchburg 24503. "Parks and trails are an extremely important asset to any community. We are fortunate here in Lynchburg that past leaders of our city recognize that fact and acted accordingly. The jewel of our park system, the Blackwater Creek Trail along an abandoned rail corridor, could have ended up as a housing development if not for good foresight and leadership of a few decades ago. That type of decision-making should continue and especially address good access to a trail or park, even a mini-park, for every citizen of Lynchburg. The health and welfare of the city and of its citizens are dependent upon it. I am fully supportive of using tax dollars to maintain what we have and to develop even more." This next is from Kevin Kope. It reads, "It has been brought to my attention that the city is considering cuts to Parks and Recreation for trail maintenance or expansion. Our Blackwater Creek Park is the jewel of outdoor recreation for our citizens. It would be a huge disservice to turn our backs on the funding that is required to keep our trails and parks up to par. I hope that we can vote against this cut in the budget." Number 12 is from Pamela Shirey from Elboward Avenue. "It is my understanding that the Park and Recreation Master Plan, which lays out what, where, how the department will operate for the next decade or so, has been presented to City Council. A single person voiced opposition to it, stating that they didn't want any more funding to be spent on parks or trails. I think this is very short-sighted, and as the parks and trail system make Lynchburg a much nicer city, it would be without. It gives opportunities to people who can't go far to experience nature. The parks and trail system is used by so many people, and as a newer resident to the city, is something realtors use a draw to live here. To let these important green spaces lose funding would be detrimental to the city and its residents." The next is from Beth Bibby. I hope I'm saying that right. "I am a citizen of the city of Lynchburg, and I want to express my opinion to City Council that they vote in favor of the proposed Parks and Rec Master Plan. Our parks are such a gift to the health and happiness of citizens, it is critical that they are maintained and improved." This next is from Davy Hasselgrove. "My name is Davy Hasselgrove, and I am contacting you to voice support for the Lynchburg Parks and Rec Master Plan. As the owner of Blackwater Bike Shop and a founding board member of the Greater Lynchburg Off-Road Cyclists, I see great value in the addition of trails and recreation activities in our city. I have seen countless smiles and excitement from children and adults alike when they discover something new or master new skill on our trail systems. Lynchburg does, however, have an outdoor recreation community that is growing faster than its facilities. This community needs more space, and it is a major benefit to the city. They set an example of health and physical fitness for our city. They enlarge the volunteer pool for civic projects, and they share their positive experiences with others, prompting more people to visit our city. Recent trail projects we have completed with GLOC, including our new pump track, have attracted outdoor recreation tourists from two-plus hours away. These tourists are patronizing convenience stores or restaurants, and in some cases, hotels and shopping. Recreational tourism is growing fast, and Lynchburg has an excellent opportunity to expand its trails, systems, to benefit its residents and attract these tourists in dollars. Please vote in favor of more trails, as mentioned in the master plan. It's what's best for Lynchburg." This next one is from Jenny Tugman from Langhorn Road. It reads, "I am writing in support of the proposed expansion of the trail system in the master plan of the Parks and Recreation Department. I use the trail cell for times a week, which are very popular with locals and visitors. I always enjoy walking in Riverside Park on the weekends and noticing how many groups are utilizing the beautiful overlook for weddings, engagements, and even funerals. The picnic shelters are also always brimming with birthday parties and other celebrations. The trails are especially popular on weekends with young families, bike riders, and tourists. During COVID, the trails were a lifesaver for so many of us anxious to enter nature and the outdoors. We are so fortunate to have such beautiful walking and biking trails right in our backyard, and hope that Lynchburg will continue to expand and connect the trails so that more people, both residents and visitors, can enjoy our beautiful city. Outdoor recreation is a great attraction for both visitors as well as an additional enticement for people considering moving to Lynchburg. Retirees are especially searching for outdoor opportunities. Increasing our trails will be great for business, the health of our residents, and promoting Lynchburg as a tourist destination." This next is from Shannon Brennan. It reads, "I am writing in support of the proposed master plan of the Parks and Recreation Department, especially the proposed expansion of the trail system. As a member of Natural Bridge Appalachian Trail Club, I often lead hikes on the Blackwater Creek Trail, and my husband and I also hike and bike there often. Lynchburg's greatest natural assets, including creeks, rivers, and trees, are what make it a special place to live." Number 17 is from Kurt Baker from Bloxville Road. "City Council, please support the already approved Parks and Rec Master Plan. The improvements detailed in the plan will take our park system from good to great. I moved to Lynchburg from Tampa 15 years ago, and a big reason I have stayed in the trail system in Lynchburg is the trail system. Please understand how this makes life better for all Lynchburg residents. Please support the plan." This next one is from William Blackman. "It is my understanding that the 10-year Parks and Rec Master Plan, including funds for Parks and Trails maintenance development, is facing opposition. As a resident of our fair city since 1984, I can attest to the inestimable value of the Lynchburg Parks and Trail Systems. They are a terrific attraction for those considering a move to Lynchburg, especially those with children. Spaces and trails for outdoor recreation enhance both physical and mental health. As a physician, I cannot overestimate the health benefits of physical exercise. In addition, our city's trails and parks foster a sense of pride and community. My wife and I, along with our now-adult children and grandchildren, as well as our multiple canine friends, have spent countless hours on Lynchburg City's baseball and soccer fields, tennis courts, trails, and playgrounds. We will continue to do so. We cannot allow these wonderful and well-utilized resources to be neglected. I strongly support continued funding for park and trail maintenance and development." This next is from Jason Kendall, and he writes on behalf of the GLOC, the Greater Lynchburg Off-Road Cyclists. It reads, "The GLOC would like to voice our support for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to connect and expand upon the present trail system that was recently proposed. As our club is the primary nonprofit organization that maintains the Peakview Park hiking and biking trail system, we see a massive benefit to adding more multi-use trails and linking existing trail systems together throughout the city. We see this configuration in our nearby larger cities such as Roanoke and Richmond, where they are very popular to the local community, as well as outside residents that travel to the city for this experience. This will only enhance visitors' desire to come to Lynchburg, where they potentially could stay at our hotels, eat at our restaurants, and shop at our retail establishments. Furthermore, the addition of an interconnected trail system would only serve to improve the desirability and marketability of the area. Families, young professionals, and retirees may all find this prospect appealing when searching for a place to permanently reside. These new trails also will provide an exceptional place for runners, cyclists, and walkers, families, and many more to enjoy Lynchburg's trails, further enhancing the physical fitness benefits of our community. Finally, an interconnected trail system may allow commuters to bike to work instead of driving, which will have a positive impact on our environment as a whole. The Parks and Recreation Department has done an impressive job laying out this master plan that the Greater Lynchburg Off-Road Cyclists Club fully supports, as it will greatly add benefit to the already remarkable Parks and Trails we have here in Lynchburg. Please vote in favor of this proposed plan. By doing so, you'll be promoting the growth and desirability of our great city." Number 20 is from Sarah English from Beacon Hill Place. It reads, "I am writing in support of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to be voted on by City Council. I feel the plan will be a great benefit to our city, especially the additions to the trail system. It will increase recreational opportunities, tourism, and quality of life in central Virginia." The next is from Lindsay Klein and Corey Schrader. They write, "I wanted to write in support of the Parks and Recreation Department's master plan and the proposed expansion of the trail system. Our family uses the trail all the time, to get exercise, to meet friends, to welcome our out-of-town guests, to talk over potential business opportunities. Our trail system makes our city unique and lovable. I'm sure we would feel the economic impact with not only tourists visiting, but our own citizens enjoying a meal or a drink after visiting one of the trails. Please keep expanding our trails to make our city a place we all love and enjoy." The next is from Kay Muma. It reads, "I am writing in support of the proposed master plan of the Parks and Recreation Department, especially the proposed expansion of the trail system, which is used by so many of our citizens as well as many visitors to our city. My husband and I ride our bikes and walk the trails weekly. We love our trails and are so grateful that the city has made them possible. The extension of parking at Linkhorn and the new gardens that Parks and Rec are maintaining enhance the experience. We regularly travel to Farmville to ride the High Bridge Trail and to Nelson County to ride on the Virginia Blue Ridge Trail at Piney River. We'd love to see Lynchburg connect up with other central Virginia localities and do more. I work out at Poplar Forest, and it is amazing how many people are using their walking, biking trails regularly, too. We have in no way maxed out on recreation areas here in Lynchburg." This next one is from Jackie Glanz, and she wrote in support and says, "I raised my kids here in Lynchburg and have chosen to retire downtown right across from Riverfront Park. I'm an avid user of the Parks and Recreation opportunities and trails in Lynchburg. I think they add so much quality of life here." This next one is a letter sent in from Amy Bonnet, who is the executive director at Camp Kumbaya. It reads, "As the executive director of Camp Kumbaya, I am writing in support of the proposed master plan of the Parks and Recreation Department, especially the proposed expansion of the trail system, which is used by so many of our citizens as well as tourists on a daily basis. Camp Kumbaya was founded in 1950 and has served the Lynchburg community and beyond for 72 years, through our summer day camp, school field trips, and community events. Many of the community members who regularly hike our public 1.25-mile Cosby Trail also enjoy the trail system created and maintained by the Parks and Recreation Department. On a daily basis, we see firsthand how our citizens benefit from having access to meaningful outdoor experiences where they can make deep connections to nature. We recognize that we are fortunate to live in such a beautiful region of the country with so many ways to access nature. We admire the vision and foresight of our city leaders decades ago to invest in our recreational infrastructure, which enhances our quality of life and is a primary reason many families choose to raise their families here. We implore you, as elected officials of our community, to support and expand the outdoor recreational experiences available to Lynchburg residents and the people who visit our beautiful city." This is number 25, and it is from Thomas Nygaard. It reads, "As a physician, avid walker, and a member of the BG Hill Trippers Hiking Club, I am writing in support of the proposed master plan of the Parks and Recreation Department. I especially support the proposed expansion of the trail system, which is used by so many of our citizens, as well as our tourists, on a daily basis. I strongly believe that our trail system is vital to the health of our citizens by providing a safe and lovely area to exercise for young and old." And our last letter that we have is a form email, which I'll read once into the record, and then all of the names who have submitted it. It reads, "As members of the BG Hill Trippers Hiking Club, we are writing in support of the proposed master plan of the Parks and Recreation Department, especially the proposed expansion of the trail system, which is used by so many of our citizens as well as tourists on a daily basis. The BG Hill Trippers was founded in 2016 and has grown to almost 70 members, mostly retirees, including local businessmen, doctors, teachers, lawyers, and journalists. We frequently enjoy the Blackwater Creek Trails, Percival's Island, Plater Nature Center, Eagle Iry, and Cosby Woods. We also hike nearby sections of the AT, as well as the High Bridge Trail, the Piney River, and Chessey Trails. We hike every Wednesday year-round and frequently discuss how fortunate we are to live in such a beautiful region of the country with so many ways to access nature, and how important this was in our decision to retire here. We admire the vision and foresight of our city leaders decades ago to invest in our recreational infrastructure, which enhances our quality of life and is a primary reason many of our children choose to raise their families here. many of our children choose to raise their families here. We implore you as elected officials of our community to support and expand the outdoor recreational experiences available to Lynchburg's residents and the people who visit our beautiful city. Respectfully yours, BG Hill Trippers. This is signed by Paul Mudrick, Bernard Mundie, Terry Adams, Richard Pumphrey, Gary Yerkhart, John Walker, Joe Stennett, Christopher King, Bill Sanford, Billy Giles, Richard Millam, Paul Soufer, J.R. Pugh, and Tom Nygaard. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and with that, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with...oh, what? No?
I have no more.
Oh, okay.
Can you read them again?
No, 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 no. The public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Councilman Helgason.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as I look at this, and I hear the passion, and I hear the concerns, you know, sometimes what happens is you kind of, we look kind of back historically, and we see these beautiful pictures that are created in this document. We see lovely ideas, lovely things, and we look back a few years ago, we remember the flood that happened and knocked out a lot of that trail. So what we're talking about, they're different things. We're looking at $107 million of new capital improvements pending. I know you mentioned about, hey, don't raise our taxes. Quite frankly, when you look at just the debt service payment on that, it's about 17 cents on your real estate tax if we're going to fully implement this. Some of the items are fantastic. Some of them are, we need to maintain, as opposed to having a $170 million expansion. You know, we're looking at lots of things that we hear. We heard from schools with regarding their $100 million capital improvement plan. We have roads, we have lots of things, and there's lots of wonderful things in here. And so what the question is, what are we going to actually expand? What are we going to be able to maintain? As opposed to having some plans that are fantastic, oh man, it's fun to read and fun to...I love Santa Claus and Christmas shopping and looking at all the lovely things, that would be fantastic. But as pointed out, sometimes these plans, you know, we could easily just adopt the plan and put it on the shelf. Does that do any good? Or would we rather say, let's actually kind of, maybe, let's table this and probably think about what's really critical, what is something that we could actually probably do, rather than having citizens having expectations that $177 million capital improvement plan is going to be done, and we're going to raise everybody's taxes 17 cents on your real estate to pay for it? We can also look to see what can we maintain very well? What can we actually make improvements? You know, what I'd like to see us try to do is figure out how we can do is, when we spend money, that actually really helps with our tax revenue, that grows our tax base. Some kind of, you know, recreational tourism, where people are actually coming to Lynchburg and staying at our hotels and eating our restaurants. That is investing. That's not just spending. I like to see us grow our tax base through prudent investing. You know, as pointed out by my neighbors, I remember that Ford Avenue. I remember when it was two-lane. Remember then they came up with a program that had a line in the middle? Remember that? One part of the day, the third lane in the middle, you could go that way, the other time, pardon the change, and you went back the other way. This is a main arterial. And so, you know, I'm sure the folks that wrote this plan had very good intentions, but the devil sometimes is in those details. And you, my goodness, see the fact that you want to take a main arterial and now get rid of all the cars that are on there. You know, we drive on that rascal every day. I mean, that's a busy road. You don't just use that in a plan, because sometimes what happens in these plans, and I've seen over time, you know, I've seen over time what happens with plans that we adopt because they're neat and they sound good. We adopt them, and everybody's happy, and then we put them on the shelves. Or we adopt them, then later, it's now, it's kind of the point that says, aha, you adopted the plan. Council adopted the plan on page 272, said, hey, you're going to cut out that Ford Avenue into a two-lane dirt road. I mean, my goodness, come on. So when you see those kind of things, and then I'm thankful that citizens read those things, there's lots of fantastic things, but we got to actually kind of realize what we can actually do. I mean, it's, I like to see the trails that we have and maintaining those. If we have the ability that we can expand some things, $107 million, I just think we need to really kind of think about this and not just simply saying we got a great plan and let's go forward with it. So I believe, you know, I think it would probably be prudent of us to table this and to really kind of think of something and figure out how we can take this work of all the different things and recognize where are there deserts of parks? You know, I think it was pointed out in Ward Three and Ward Four, there's kind of a shortage. We also had a pretty good description with regarding Heritage Park, some things that, some pretty good land out there. And maybe we ought to focus there for a fraction of this $107 million. So I think it's a grandiose idea, it's fantastic, but I think, you know, keeping our feet on the ground, I think it'd probably be prudent for us to table it and really kind of be able to discuss what actual things we think we would like to do, as opposed to just adopting a big, grandiose plan, set it on the shelf, and have false expectations.
Mr. Manager, with the dollar amount, if we adopted this tonight, how much dollars
would be allocated into any finances whatsoever?
So it's a plan that has a sticker price like Councilman Helgason has...
Forgive me, Mr. Manager, I am going to be a little coy. If we adopt this tonight, how many dollars will be allocated out of any funds for the city?
Currently, zero.
Okay. So, I'll say it differently. By adopting this tonight, there is no fiscal impact to the city outside of paying for the plan that we've already allocated money for.
That's correct.
Okay. You know, I, Councilmember Helgason raises phenomenal points. I think setting the expectation is critical. 17 cents on the tax rate, $170 million, that's accurate if we were to pay for it all right now, and that's just not what this would do. I want to say what I'm for, not simply what I'm against. And if tabling this would mean I can hear more of what my colleagues are for, I'm fine with that. I have my own copious notes of reservations with this plan that I've talked at length with some folks about, that, you know, I'm not too pleased with, but it's also something that I think we, as a council, can really come together and say, this is a need, particularly in the south side of the city, and what things we can do. But let's be honest here, it is not $107 million, $170 million in spending. We take each of these items individually and allocate funds as we see fit. To say otherwise is not accurate, just, and I'm sorry to say that, but that is the case. There are some things I want to bring to mind, but in so doing, I would prefer to make a motion to approve and then make those comments afterwards. So I made that motion.
Pardon, no, so he motioned to approve...
To approve the adoption.
To approve the adoption, so she seconded.
Was Jeff supposed to first?
He did his not motion, yes.
Okay.
No.
In speaking to the motion, I would like to see this plan incorporate, you know, the rollout of the plan incorporate sports complex, a sports complex of sorts, whether outdoors or indoors. I think there's a hidden thing there that we're not really hitting on, whether that's baseball, whether that's outdoor activity. You could tie a lot of things into that that I think this city offers, waterways, trails, and parks. I think you can incorporate some form of a complex into that, where Lynchburg then can be a destination for a lot of those activities. We just hosted the, I think it was the World Series, what was it?
Baseball.
Yeah. I know, I umpired for it, but I forgot the name. It was baseball, but we hosted, you know, we're hosting state tournaments for park activities in Lynchburg. I think that's, that says something about what we offer from a regional standpoint. Specifically for Timberlake and Wards Three and Four, Brook, the Brookville Neighborhood Park that is planned, the Windsor Hills, Windsor Hills and Leesville Community Parks, and the Heritage Park renovation are all, if you look at it in the plan, about three to five years out, or five-plus years out. I think that needs to be moved back and closer, so as we're considering implementing this plan or aspects of it, that to me is too far down the road. We see developments coming left and right in that neck of the woods. Six years down the road might be too late, and I don't want that to happen. I think we need, you know, a phrase I've been saying is conservatives often forget that we like to conserve the environment, but that gets politicized a little bit too much in these days. Water access, I grew up on the water. I know, I'm not from here, but we have so much water access in this city, and I think if we build on that, especially in the trail system, that is a thing that we can sell and market. I see this as a vision for Ward Four that desperately needs it. No, it doesn't have everything I like. I do not like the whole proposal about Ford Avenue. I think that's a silly proposal, but I understand the idea behind it, especially from a biking perspective. There was a comment made about the dog park, whether that's going to be moved or not. I remember there being a conversation about the dog park moving to another location and being operated by the entity of the dog park and no longer through the city. I don't know if I'm speaking 100% truth, but I know there was a conversation about that. And I think it's to be determined where that location is, so just a little bit of suspense for you. So in closing, those are some of my thoughts. I think Timberlake could have used a little bit more love, but it's not enough for me to vote against it. I don't believe this is 100, I know for a fact this is not $170 million worth of spending. And one other note, I know the Templeton Center's been talked about being moved. I would like to see that go in the Ford Hill area or Ford Avenue, since you have all those retirement communities built up in that corridor. So overall, I do have some concerns with the plan. It's not enough for me to vote against it, and I hope this is not a plan that we put on the shelf. I think it's something that we need to take a serious look at for the needs of the community from a public service perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Dolan, did you want to speak to your second?
Yeah, thank you. Well, first off, Councilmember Ferrelli makes some really good points, and I really support some of those, but you know, you can't do anything unless you have a plan, and that's what this is. This is a plan. I think it's very important that the community understands it is not a plan that we are funding at this moment, and it will be funded as go along, if some segments of it may not get funded and may not be implemented. I just think it's important that people know that. And I also think that this is critical to our city in terms of, if we want to stay relevant, if we want businesses to come, we want residents, we want visitors, we want people to stay and people to enjoy a good quality of life here. And the young age that, our average age is 28.3 or 4, whatever that number is, you know, it's important to keep those young people, and they love outdoor activities, and we really need to make sure that we maintain, keep the activities themselves relevant. And I would totally support this.
Councilwoman Waldorf's next.
Yes. Thank you. Again, I do support the plan. I'm so thankful that the whole team got involved, that community, with the community input, with having round tables all over the city, different community centers, city council meetings, and everywhere. So I appreciate the input you receive from all the citizens of our city. And one thing that I always hear about Lynchburg is that one of the attractions is the trails, that people come from all over to the trails. When they come to Lynchburg, they come to the trails, they come to the restaurants, they come spending money, go to hotels, so that is a revenue-generating event as well. I'm impressed by all those that read all the pages. Thank you for doing that. I didn't have the opportunity to do so, but I'm impressed by all those that read all that. And I'm thankful that, you know, in Lynchburg, we've used some of the CBG money to renovate our community centers like Diamond Hill and the work they do there, and so many other great community centers in its neighborhoods. I grew up, I'm probably the only city council member who grew up in Lynchburg, who's from Lynchburg, who went to schools here, and I grew up from Riverside Park. And to see the renovations that have been done at Riverside Park and the overlook there, I think we did a picture there some time ago, with my picture when I was like 10, back in the day. So it just has a lot of historical value to me, because of the great treasure we have in our city, like Treasure Island, the great treasure we have in our city. I'm thankful for that. Again, I know it's a plan, and also a project that we can work for, but like as Councilmember Dolan said, you know, you need to have a plan in order to go forward. At least we have a plan in place that as time comes and as funding is available, we can support these plans. It's not going to happen overnight, but again, it gives a roadmap map, just like the Tariana Plan and so many other plans we have in our city. At least we have a plan in place to be getting input from the community, and we can work towards those plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldorf. Did you have anything to say, Councilman Taylor?
No, it's just a plan.
Okay.
And Mr. Banner said we didn't have, it's not funded.
Correct, Mr. Taylor.
How long will it take to fund it?
It depends on council priorities, and anyone CIP, you look five, 10 years up. And there's usually, depending on debt service and what we call capacity for what's in your current plan, you're given a certain amount of leverage. And so we'll have that conversation on the 14th about your capital improvement plan, look at the priorities, and I think Vice Mayor Ferrelli looked out in year six and said maybe move some things around. We're going to do our best as professional staff to say the things that you absolutely, we talked about our buildings earlier, we talked about the investment in those.
How much do you think it's going to cost every taxpayer?
For which part, Mr. Taylor?
Any part.
I couldn't quantify it. If I take 107, and I guess 80,000 people into 107 million, just on that number gives you a kind of a factor, but I can't give you that number. I can try to extrapolate, but that's the best that I can do.
I needed a park in White Rock Hill. I put it there. No cost to the city or taxpayers. So there's ways to do things and get it done. So I guess all the citizenry get together, we can do this thing, right?
Absolutely.
Without raising our taxes.
There's no intent, nor have I said, nor has anybody said this evening, that we have any intent on raising anybody's taxes. I think there was a concern by a citizen that it would have to be, but that is not a part of, this is just the Rex Parks Master Plan.
Did you have anything, Councilman Missson?
Yeah, I was just giving you an opportunity to speak, because you hadn't spoken yet. You're good? Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. You know, as I hear this, originally when I was talking about it, I said, you know, probably the best thing to do would be to table it so we can talk about it to improve it. Then I heard a motion to approve it, and then gave a litany of things that should be changed on it to improve it. So I'll make an amended motion that we actually table this, so we can actually approve it. I mean, because there's lots of things that I believe were stated that are critical. I mean, some of those things we should actually really try to focus on, not just, again, having a plan that's on the shelf, but actually something that actually, we can have the real things that we can actually do, and actually some of these things that we need to remove. I mean, I don't want to ever improve a plan that is actually saying, we're going to take a four-lane main arterial road and turn it into two lanes. That is not something I want to be on record of. I think we can improve that. I think we can take some of these things out. I think some of the items that were talked about of when this is going to be, is it going to be 10 years from now or two years from now? We can actually kind of look at those priorities. Or we can say, let's just approve it today, put it on the shelf, and then what's going to happen in the capital improvement plan? We're going to come up and say, hey, let's do this. Well, let's do this, and let's do that. So if we want to improve it, I think we should table it and try to improve it. If we want to just vote for it today and put it on the shelf, vote for it today and put it on the shelf, either way. But, you know, I think tabling it would be good so we can actually figure out a way of what is really critical and what's needed where, as opposed to just fully adopting the whole plan.
Okay. Councilmember, forgive me, if I may, reject, at least from my part...
I have the floor, Vice Mayor.
I was going to offer that the amended motion isn't needed, because I would make it a friendly adjustment. If someone wants to work through items, I don't want to reject that. So forgive me, I do recognize you have the floor, I just wanted to offer that to the body.
So to table it would be accepted?
I'm comfortable with that, acknowledging if councilmembers want to keep working on it, far be it for me to refuse that opportunity.
So, just...
Councilman Missson, you go ahead.
You know, kind of dovetailing on a lot of the different things that all of you have said. First, thank you to staff. I think that this is, got a lot of great stuff in it. It's a great foundation for the plan. But I know from my experience as a previous city employee, if you throw a plan at us that's not the plan that is the plan, people are going to get to work on the plan that you throw at us. So I don't think it makes much sense to approve a plan that we might want to change. I think we should get the plan right, we should dial it in, and that would be then what city staff acts on. So that's one of the main reasons that I want to support tabling this plan. It does have a price tag of $107 million on it overall. That is over the long term. I think the, what's the, till 2030 or 2040, which one is it?
I'm not sure of the outside.
Yeah, so it's a long-term plan. And the plan does actually recognize the Timberlake Corridor as underserved. It also recognized portions of the Timberlake Corridor as some of the most densely populated It also recognized portions of the Timberlake Corridor as some of the most densely populated areas in our city. So I just can't look at that plan and say that it's equitable when we're continuing to densely populate an area and then it's underserved. And it just doesn't do enough to address it in my mind. Our citizens are struggling to afford groceries, gas, and other goods right now. I would like to see more of an approach to see how we can generate revenue off of that with recreational tourism. I think of competing with a place like Salem, right? Salem has a phenomenal youth sports park. You could get tremendous amount of private investment into that. That brings in tons of travel baseball, tons of things, right? I think of the fairgrounds in Salem. What do we have, 59 acres, I think, at Heritage Park? Right? Salem has fairgrounds, they have a fair every year. That brings in revenue into the city. And we can't compete with that right now. There's certain aspects of recreational tourism that in Lynchburg, we should be able to compete with Salem. We should be able to compete with Martinsville, but we can't. And those are things that I would like to see in a plan. So I just think that we can table this plan and we can dial it in and get it right. And I really want to see a great plan moving forward that's going to focus on bringing revenue into our city with our investments into our parks.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Again, and forgive me, I meant no disrespect by interjecting, I just want to simply offer, you know, and by my viewpoint, an amended motion isn't necessary. I'm happy to make it friendly to, you know, if someone wants to work on, hey, these are things I want to see included in the plan, I don't want to rob a council member from having that opportunity. I also think maybe sending this to physical development to work through these items and put it into committee process, say, these are things that we want to work through. Are they feasible? How can we include them? So from my perspective, that would be a friendly change to my motion if that keeps us from going the whole parliamentary wheel.
Well, then.
Councilwoman Dolan, no, you're fine.
And do we disregard all the meetings that we had with public comment about what citizens would want to have? Do we, are we determining for them what they want to have? Is that what we're going to do here?
Yeah.
I mean, and also a professional that worked with staff to put this plan together. I mean, they did have citizen input on this, a lot of it, just saying.
Councilwoman Walden.
And that was as well. I mean, they brought, I think, a team from Tennessee or wherever they came in and worked with, I mean, so many roundtables discussions about how to make this community better and what the community wanted to see in those parks and things of that nature. So it was such a strong effort. But when we finished plans, I thought always after we make a plan, then it comes to our, I guess during our budgeting process, we see what we can afford and then do a timeline. So it's not like it's going to happen overnight. It's usually we have the plans and then we do allocations over a period of time. That's how I thought it normally worked, where we would do that, we have this great beautiful plan like downtown, the 2020 plan, 2040 plan now. It didn't happen overnight, it was two-way traffic or whatever, but it was a plan for over the past 20 years that we got to certain place where we are now. And afterwards, the other plans like Tariana, you know, didn't happen overnight, but it's a plan we work in process and we do based on our funding. So I thought it'd be the same thing for the city plan, where the parks and rec, they have the plan, and then we just allocate as we go forward. The city team, when they bring stuff back to us and say, we can do this this time, we can do this this year, we can do this allocation this year, and give us a kind of a roadmap of where we're going with that plan. That's why I thought the process worked.
Thank you. So it was my understanding that this was kind of a vision board for the city, and it was kind of what the big vision was and that it could be modified, obviously, as concerns were presented. We've heard a lot of those concerns. I understand both. I understand everything that's been set up here and I get what everybody is saying. But I do think it can be looked at both ways, but I do understand that there was quite an investment placed in bringing the people in. What was that investment, Mr. Benda?
I don't remember the.
Do you recall?
Number, but it was, I think, over 200.
$125,000.
Okay, so $125,000 to bring in consultants?
Yes.
Okay, is what we've already spent to help develop this vision board.
Three years.
And two years long, okay. So that's something to consider, that that's already been spent.
Correct.
Thus far. Okay. Please.
I'm just going to say one thing about this plan. Yes, it took two years, it was $125,000, 4,000 people participated, but this is a guide. This is a vision plan. There are probably 100 recommendations in this plan, and everyone understands that we'll only implement the ones that city council sees fit. So if you don't like the idea about Fort Avenue, we won't implement that. But we'll pull these one by one and bring them in front of council, these CIP projects, and they'll vote on those and decide whether they're going to fund. Or is there something else they'd rather fund in turn? Like, so if we were to put forward, you know, ball field complex, but you would rather have a park in Ward Two, that's what would happen. So I'm just saying, these are just recommendations.
Right.
And it's not set in stone by any means.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I would like to, I would.
I got a question.
Oh, you have a question? Okay. Sorry.
So I know there's lots of things and sometimes plans, you get lots of things thrown up on the board, but did anybody kind of, you know, where I really get the heartburn is I kind of question when somebody, lots of people are getting together and nobody paused and questioned and said, what is the real plausibility of taking a four-lane road and making it a two-lane? It's a four-lane arterial. So I recognize there's lots of ideas that come up, but somebody's got to say, you know, if you have ideas, eventually they kind of need to be screened and separated from just, you know, fantasy land versus something that actually can be implemented. So when you see things like that, I just begin to kind of question, you know. So help me understand that.
Well, there were a lot of public meetings for the draft, for different versions. So I mean, there was a lot of times that the public could have weighed in on that and said, this is not going to work, or city staff could have said, this is probably not going to work. That never, that did not happen. Now, one thing I do want to say about this plan is we didn't plan on 107,000 or $107 million being funded by city taxpayers. The beauty of adopting this plan into the comprehensive plan is that we can now leverage this plan for all of these outside grant funds because it now has been adopted into our comprehensive plan. So that's one of the main key points behind this.
Thank you.
Any other questions before she sits down? Yes, please.
No questions. Please, for me. My only comment is we've reviewed this at a work session and business at a briefing. We've reviewed it at a public hearing, a second public hearing. You know, at least from my perspective, I want to be transparent and honest. If someone wants to work through this more, truly, I don't see a problem with that. But at the same time, at nine o'clock at night on the final public hearing, only now we hear these concerns being brought forward as to why it should be delayed or potentially shot down. So I would hope that if we do table this, we do hear what substantive changes would you offer. I've outlined a few that I have concerns with. You know, so I'm willing to come to the table in good faith and say, I'm fine delaying this, but don't wait and wait and wait and not share those concerns to make this plan be the right one. So again, I'm offering, we don't have to go through this whole amended motion process. I'm happy to make that a friendly one if.
That's already done, right?
Well, the only reason I'm saying this is because I'm not sold that it is done. So needless to say, that's where I stand on it.
So the motion on the floor is to table it?
No, I was making the motion to table, and Councilmember Farrell said, hey, I'll take that as a friendly amendment to table it.
I would need Councilmember Dolan to agree with that.
To agree to his motion?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. The rules of procedure don't necessarily contemplate friendly amendments. In the past, when we have done friendly amendments, it's by consensus of council that the nature of the motion would change, and that would be what was on the table to vote. If there's a disagreement on council as to the friendly amendment actually being the one on the table, then council should consider the motion to amend prior to the main motion that was previously there.
So the friendly amendment would be that he's withdrawing his original motion, that he's supporting, supporting the amended motion to table. Is that what, deciding on?
He amended his motion to, instead of approving it tonight, to table it for further discussion. He offered a friendly amendment.
Correct. Okay.
But for that friendly amendment to replace the motion to approve, all of council must agree. But if it doesn't, it's the motion to amend is what's considered which was made by Councilmember Helgeson.
Okay. So.
So I'm agreeing to entertain the motion to amend.
No, you're agreeing to actually not just approve it tonight, but to actually table it so we can work on some of these problems that we had.
We're going to vote on table. We're going to vote on table, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
So I would add also, Madam Mayor, with a motion to table, the way it's been made, it would table it indefinitely. If council wants this to come back to a date certain, it needs to state that it will come back to a date certain.
I would advise council, the best course of action would be to send this to the Physical Development Committee for working through it in proper due course and bringing it back. If this is the direction council is going to go, we do need to put some parameters on this. I would recommend this go to the Physical Development Committee to work through and with staff as to what the concerns may be. And I believe they can be articulated since Councilmember Helgeson is in fact on the Physical Development Committee. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Walden.
My challenge is sometimes we get into front of the weeds, is we want to be too controlling. We have a proxy rec department that has brought in resources to develop a plan. We want to take over the proxy rec, we want to take over our schools, we need to let our schools to be our schools, we let proxy rec do their job. We just need to empower those persons we've hired to do these jobs, that spend time in these jobs, that's been working on a plan for two years. We just empower them, say, look, we don't want to spend $170 million, we want to do some and just bring it back to us over time and empower them to do that. We're not allocating any funds today, we're approving a plan. And then like, as Mrs. Jones said, then they can start researching funds for that, researching grants, other federal grants possibly, whatever grants may be out there that can support some of these projects. So again, there's a plan out there, it's a roadmap map, and then we can see how we can fund that. Again, these things attract people to our community, these are what drives revenue up. When persons, we talk about the age bracket, like 25, those are the persons who, young persons, who really likes the trails, who likes going up there and doing the walk. I can't walk them, but those persons like those kind of trails. So we need to support those persons that like those things. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to table this discussion, correct? And at the Vice Mayor's recommendation to send it to the Physical Development Committee to work out the details. Okay.
That wasn't the motion, but that would be probably a good idea, so, but that's not the motion.
Correct, the motion is to table.
Motion is to table.
Okay, so we are going to now vote on tabling the discussion. Okay. The motion fails four to three. So now we will vote on the original motion, or there's not an original motion?
There's an original motion. That's correct.
Okay.
No more motion. It's done. So the motion was amended, so now there needs to be a motion whether to deny or approve the resolution or some other procedural motion related to the resolution.
Do I have a motion to pass, adopt, or adopt the resolution approving the Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Not going to reiterate.
Okay. All right, let's vote. Motion passes four to three. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number four, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing and providing issuance of not to exceed 78,500,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation public improvement bonds. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Donowitz.
Thank you. This item came to council at your last meeting as a briefing on the procedure. Tonight, I'm requesting you adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation public improvement bonds not to exceed 78,500,000 in principle and permanently finance the 2020 bond anticipation note, finance a portion of the new police headquarters, and finance current projects to allow them to continue until the next ban is in place. Also requested tonight is a resolution amending the 2023 budget for general water sewer, stormwater funds to provide appropriations totaling $475,000, which is for the bond issuance cost. And I just will make the note, tonight I have provided every project that was funded with the line of credit. These are all projects, and the police headquarters and the other funds to get us to the next line of credit are all current projects that are under contract or designed and moving forward and are in appropriations from either this budget or previous budgets. There are no new projects.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? No? Okay. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Okay. Any emails or phone calls?
There are none.
None? Okay. Well, the public hearing is now closed and the matter rests with council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
You know, this is pretty much customary, where we seek funds, they have to help with the funding process that we're going to embark that. That's what's so great about our city, being such a well-managed financial city with a strong bond rating, we're able to secure these projects. And also, they mentioned this, I think it's the police department. So we have a new police department, we're seeking funds, they can need to seek funds for. So we're thankful that we have the good rating that we can do, that we can get these bonds at a good low interest rate.
Okay. Anyone else? No?
I think, I need some advice here. Can you speak to what I've been whispering to you for a moment? I don't understand how we can vote on an item if we're missing two members and we know they're in the back room talking.
Well, certainly, I think for purposes of voting, council has the ability to vote because there's a quorum present on the dais as to whether, you know, they're talking or not. I can't speak to that because I'm not seeing them, but certainly the mayor has the ability to do a brief recess to go, to try to bring them back for purposes of doing the vote if that's something that council wants to do.
At least from my, thank you, Mr. Turner, at least from my perspective, considering the breadth of knowledge with finances and associated with the bonds here at the waiting just for a moment, I think would be somewhat wise, but that's just my own opinion.
Councilman Helgeson, we're about to vote.
Oh, sorry. Well, that was quick.
It was quick.
It's quick when I'm not here to talk about borrowing a bunch of money.
We didn't want, she didn't miss it. Did you have any discussion on the bond?
On the geo-bonds?
Yes.
Donna, you had put in here not to exceed 78 and a half million, but, you know, when I look at some of these items on the wish list, obviously the police building, that's now, I think somewhere around, if I can find, about 23 million or something. So what's the minimum we could do for the, because every time we issue more bonds, obviously there's debt service. I mean, we're looking at, you know, a debt service component on here for new 78 and a half million, so.
These are no, there are no new projects and there are no new initiatives. These are all projects that were either appropriated in the 2023 CIP or a previous CIP that are currently moving forward. They're under contract. We put them on a ban first so that we didn't borrow funds before we needed them. That ban is, it closes at the end of June, so we need to permanently finance those pieces. We, we used about 26 million, 25 million of the 42 million, so we need to permanently finance that. There is the 26 million that is associated with the police department to, to fully fund the contract that is in place. So this completes the financing for the police department. And then also, we're utilizing some funds to continue projects so that they don't stop until the next line of credit is in place. So there are no new projects. These are all approved by council and adopted.
So some of these things with regarding this, this four or five million for the schools' construction, replacement roofs, couple of gym additions, those things, those have all been approved already and under contract?
Yeah, they're already adopted in our current CIP.
And so the bans right now, it's, the, the bond anticipation note, all of these projects are actually approved.
Yes.
And now we're going from like the short-term bond, the bans financing more to a longer term. Is that really the only thing?
We will permanently finance it. A bond anticipation note or a line of credit. Council has used the strategy for the last 12 years or more to where we establish a line of credit, put the projects as they are moving forward on that ban, and then at the end of that line of credit, we close that out, permanently finance it, and then move forward to establish the next one. Because the last thing we wanna do is borrow money before we need it. Sometimes, you know, life happens and projects slow down, or as in the case of Lakeside Drive Bridge, they speed up. So this gives us the ability to make sure that the most important projects are moving forward and we're financing those in the most efficient way.
Like some of these school projects, for example, we talked about schools, the, the overage earlier this afternoon, but these are a higher priority than what was brought to us today with the, the, the school excess, the, the excess funds, the million dollars that they talked about this afternoon.
These projects were brought forward and, and adopted in previous CIPs, so that RS-Pain project was not, was not in one of those. And it may be that it didn't qualify for bond financing, that it's more of a pay-as-you-go project because it's more of a maintenance-type project, which is possible as well.
And, and so again, back to some of these school funding programs, we talked about it earlier this afternoon with regarding the previous discussion that has never got off the ground with regarding the consolidation and actually having a plan that says, "Hey, these are the schools that we're gonna stay with for a long period of time. These are the ones we're not." And so none of this anticipates, because there's lots of middle schools and elementary schools that are having improvements. Is there any, you know, it just kinda doesn't look very good when you put a brand-new roof on a school that you're gonna demolish, you know, next Thursday. So has there been any further discussion with regarding school consolidation and redistricting of...
I think as Dr. Wodika brought forward today, they are continuing those discussions, but these were projects that were approved in a previous CIP.
Last year.
And I don't even think it was in 23. I believe they were in 21 and 22. So they're just now moving forward. They're getting those roofs done. A lot of times, they do roofs over the summer. They can bond fund those if you do a complete roof, roof replacement. So these were in previous adopted CIPs.
And, and so they're already approved contracts, they're already funded by the bans, and the only difference, I mean, because, because quite frankly, I didn't wanna be voting in favor of this. But as you're explaining it now, it does make maybe a little more sense because there are already projects that are there.
Yes, these, these projects have contracts, they were adopted by council. There is nothing new. There, we'll start working on the next CIP on February 14th, and we'll be looking at the next set of projects that we need to be looking at and considering and how we fund those. But these are for, all from previous adopted budgets.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No.
No? Okay. Well, let's cast our vote then.
So I, I, I was in the, I was in the restaurant, I didn't hear what the motion was. I imagined a...
Oh, it's just adopting the resolution authorizing this.
Yeah, we have two resolutions to adopt. One for the actual approval for the bond issuing, the second for the issuance cost.
So those are separate? We're doing one at a time?
So this is authorizing and providing an issuance to not exceed the 78,000?
I need to vote.
City council making motion to adopt both resolutions, or is council doing them each individually?
What was, who mo?
Both of them.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to, for both.
Why does it wanna be different?
Okay, so this is for both?
Yes.
Okay, it was the second for both as well?
Second.
Your second was for both, yes? Okay. Cast your vote.
I need to vote for it, but I got to.
Okay. Pass a seven zero.
Where's the applause now, huh? Hey, come on! Sorry. Sorry.
Okay. The next section is public comment.
And just to be clear, we were talking about how we're already voting against a friendly amendment in the back room.
Okay. Hey, we're talking.
The next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. We will now hear from a group representative regarding a matter, Mr. Jay Salmon. I believe that's actually Dr. Salmon.
Yeah, that's all right. All I gotta say is, wow. Oh, better get moving. Okay. Welcome, new council members. Thank you for your willingness to serve our city. My name is John Salmon. I'm representing Unified Potentiaire 501C3 for transportation. It's been operating here for about three years. I've been a physician here for over two decades, but redirected my career with the goal of improving community health using novel technology solutions. A physician typically aims to improve health of their patient, but the primary determinant of the health of the individual is actually the health of the community in which they live, so-called social determinants of health. In our city, transportation is one, if not the most important of these. Simply put, you cannot live a healthy and happy life if you cannot get where you need to go, and we desperately lack resources to serve those who cannot own and operate their own car. When I speak of the health of the community, I'm really talking about the economy, which is the metabolism of our community. And the disease of that community is poverty. So why does this matter? I've heard multiple times that we have the cure for poverty: high school diploma, marriage before the carriage, and work a 40-hour week. And while this may be true, you can't work a 40-hour week if you don't have transportation. So this claim that everyone has a legitimate opportunity is the Lynchburg equivalent of "let them eat cake." This is how existing societal systems perpetuate generational poverty. But the real reason we should view poverty as a disease is money, which we've been talking about a lot tonight. People in poverty get virtually every disease at a higher incidence and have poorer outcomes than their better-resourced neighbors, and the treatment of their disease costs money, money that they don't have, so we as a city pay for it. I sent you some local data that conservatively puts the annual spend on the extra disease, not all of it mine, the extra disease in poor people in four major categories: type 2 diabetes, cardiovascular disease, cancer, mental illness. And the sum for just these four is on par with the annual budget of the public school system, or $100 million. So can we do anything about this? Well, yes, but obviously, we have to evolve beyond what we have been doing. Fixed route transportation in smaller cities and rural areas is not effective, and it costs money regardless of the number of passengers. Our local spend has grown to $15 million annually. That's a figure that's hard to wrap your head around, so I'm gonna show you what it looks like. It's $42,000 a day, which, considering the bus system, is about a dollar a second. Microtransit, connecting smaller vehicles to serve the specific and varied needs of individuals, is proven to work. We've been doing it around the country. We've been doing it here for three years. I sent you data from Wilson, North Carolina, a city about a half our size that's seeing tremendous success. Note that 52% of their rides are getting people to and from work. If we extrapolated the money they spend to what we spend, we would be enabling the employment of 1,500 people. Or if my company was given this funding, I could run 83 Model X Teslas and employ 166 people, paying them $55,000 a year plus benefits, and make those cars available 24/7. So how do we do this? It usually starts with somebody paying, being paid to do an evaluation, or you can just put out an RFP because we're, we're more than prepared here. Our system is like nothing else and is designed to be financially self-sustaining by providing a service not just for those who lack money for transportation, but for people like young people, or elderly, or anyone who would rather have someone else do the driving, people who will pay money for a service that they find valuable. In lieu of doing a survey, we have designed the nation's first prospective clinical trial looking at transportation assets and health and wellness metrics. The study would cost us $250,000, 1.6% of the annual budget of the GLTC. But take a moment and let the magnitude of this opportunity sink in. If we can build a financially sustainable solution that improves transportation assets for our most at-risk neighbors, and those people have a demonstrable improvement in their health, we will improve the health and wellness of people in our community, the hardest-to-reach, with negligible spend. There are grants available for microtransit pilot programs, and there's also the Go Virginia Project, which has immediately recognized transportation as a massive hurdle, but you are the only ones that can make it happen. If those who guide the city do not step up and lead the way, we as a community will not go anywhere. An effective transportation system deserving diverse needs will boost the economy, the health of the city, and all who live here physically connecting us. It will reduce the cost of living, making educational and employment opportunities more available. It will create equal access to things like healthcare, but more importantly, shopping, dining, activities, places, friends, and family. It's not a partisan issue, has nothing to do with an amendment to the Constitution. It's about improving lives, assuring liberty, and enabling our pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Is that, is that Councilman Helgason's birthday present?
Spend it wisely.
Timothy Santiago's next.
Okay. Yes.
Do you want to give him a minute?
You might wanna...
We can work while he talks.
If you wanna come around. Thank you, Dr. Salmon. We are now gonna hear from Mr. Timothy Santiago regarding a matter.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I don't think anyone in this city can deny that we're undergoing a housing crisis, whether it be affordable housing or just any housing. I have a friend that goes to Liberty, and my timer hasn't started yet.
Oh, our, our timer is busy collecting dollars.
But she can't find, she, it took her four months to find housing, and she has a job. She can more than afford it, but still took her four months to find suitable housing because there's that much of a lack of housing in this city. But at the same time, we have currently on our vacant, on our vacant property registry houses that are not condemned, over 240 homes. And homes that are condemned and/or vacant or not vacant, meaning, according to the vacant property registry, a house must have no utilities for at least 365 calendar days in order to be considered on the VPR. So these condemned houses, some are on that, some are not, and that list is 296. If we put, on average, and this is on the low, in two to three people per home, we're looking at around 15, over 1,500 new housing options in this city. And they can be anything from affordable to houses in each and every of the four wards, not just my ward, which is Ward 2, but each and every single one. A lot of these houses are in my neighborhood. We have houses in Vice Ma, in the Vice Mayor's neighborhood, in, in Councilmember Taylor's, Missions, Dr. Wilder, and Miss, and Miss Councilwoman Dolan, even in your neighborhood. These houses exist. But a solution to this that I see is, what if the city was willing to invest in anyone that was willing to buy these houses for rentals? Some of those ideas look like, if an individual such as myself buys a house and promises to this city that it's going, that he or she will rent out the house for a period of two years, the city forgives the tax, won't charge property taxes on said property if the house is rehabbed within a year and under a lease. Now for numbers to see what that would look like, let's say a house, and pulling up a random house on the list, we're gonna look at house number, that is 908 Wise Street, currently assessed at only $24,000. Fixed up and rehabbed, we would be looking at a value of over $160,000, and that's on the moderate end considering it's a four-bedroom home. So our, that little two-year, if we were willing to surrender it, just to improve our neighborhoods and to improve this housing crisis, would more than pay for itself down the road. Yes, it would hurt us a little bit, but I saved the best part for last, in my opinion. We're not even collecting taxes on over half of these houses on this list because over half of them have delinquent taxes that are either leaned or about to go into a tax auction. So let's come together, and if any time this city should wish to see this, you should wish to see the list, I'll make it available to you and render any advice I can. Thank you, and I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Okay, we'll now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Jack Underwood.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, glad to see you. My name's Jack Underwood. I'm here to inquire about the recent letter to the school board, which requires a parent to opt-in for sexually explicit material. I think I saw it on the work session earlier today. Did it get passed today, or is it up for being passed tonight?
It's on, later on on the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Pardon me?
I'm not allowed to comment.
Oh, not allowed to comment. Okay. So I'll, you know, we do have a problem with this kind of thing. You know, we, there, there's a problem with this in the schools. There is a sexual explicit poetry in our liberal high schools in this country, like Arobeat, Omar Akayem, and certain things like that. And I'd like to give you an example of that, that's, I think, is in our EC Glass School. This is a poem between a man and a woman, and he says, "You're like a palm tree, your breasts are like its clusters, and the palm tree, I will climb and lay hold of those clusters." And the woman answers, "I have to pull off my garment. My beloved put his hand on my latch, and my heart was thrilled within me. I opened to my beloved, and my hands dripped with liquid myrrh on the handles of his boat. My shoots are an orchid of choice's fruits. Let my beloved come and eat its choice's fruits. I would give you," the man says, "the juice of my pomegranates. That goes down sliding over your lips and teeth." Now I think it's quite clear that this is highly sexual explicit material, is it not? Do you agree with me? Sexual material? Not sexual material? Well, it's sexual material. I, I don't know. It kinda surprises me. But it's highly sexual material. And this falls within the purview of your letter, if I'm not, not mistaken, that a teacher, that a, a parent would be able to say, "No, you cannot have this read to my child." Well, what I've just read from you is from the Holy Word of God. This is directly taken from the Holy Bible, the Song of Solomon, as Mr. Helgason knows. Now, my point about this is I've been reading from the, the Word of God, but your resolution would allow a parent, even an atheistic parent, to prohibit the reading of the Word of God to a child if they chose so. And this is not something that we want to have. We want people to be able to read. How can you abide by a policy that prohibits teaching teenagers our holy scriptures? The key thing here is, we're not qualified to make this decision, the council not, you need to leave it to the city schools. Your policy has a chilling effect on learning and administrative burden on the, on education itself. Could a, a, a teacher show Michelangelo art in, in, in an English class?
Mr. Underwood, you're out of time. I'm sorry.
Yes, I know. Okay. But remember what a burden this puts on the teachers. You're trying to reduce government, not make it more complicated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Michael Bremer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Michael Bremer. I reside on Sherwood Place in Ward Four in Lynchburg. My immediate concern is the recent overreach of some members of council to attempt to dictate school policy. Unlike suggestions to protect public health, it is not the purview of city council to prescribe or even define school programs and policies or practice. We can debate the meaning and effects of opt-in and opt-out. We can dispute the definition of sexually explicit content. We can discuss programs to mitigate learning loss. But none of these, none of this discourse should be here in front of council chambers. These are matters for the superintendent and the board that directs our schools. Instead, council should be discussing how to continue the growth and prosperity of our, of our city, excuse me. Certainly, excellent education is a key factor in attracting and retaining businesses to Lynchburg, but there are other important factors that council can and should be addressing, some of which you've addressed or started to tonight. Continuing to turn toward the river by expanding public access and use of green and blue spaces downtown, as outlined in the Parks and Rec master plan. Attracting small businesses in the inner city by promoting incubator services, such as mentoring office space and deferred taxes. Encouraging expansion of entertainment venues downtown to attract and retain our younger workforce. Exploring innovative improvements to public transportation, such as what Dr. Salmon just suggested in microtransit, so that the numerous cul-de-sacs in all neighborhoods can be equitably and affordably served. Maintaining and expanding recreational opportunities, as we've heard about tonight. Developing a plan for innovative use of the millions of vacant square feet of commercial property in this city. Growing our tax base by innovation in using that existing space. Improving the appearance of Lynchburg at first glance by eliminating the embarrassing profusion of litter on our streets. Continuing to coordinate and support coalitions to develop affordable housing that is economically viable and eliminate substandard housing while assisting the unhoused. And expanding access to public mental health services throughout the city. These are just some examples. I could go on and list more and more. But now is the time for you to invest in our community. You have an opportunity to govern in a forward-looking manner. You have the chance to forsake performative gestures and do the work of guiding our city along the path of prosperity and growth with impartiality, honesty, and integrity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bremer. Okay, we will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Ms. Nicole Sanders? Saunders, sorry.
Sanders.
Sanders. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to take my time tonight to speak about three related issues having to do with Mr. Missions' proposal for city council to send a letter to school board asking them to reconsider the opt-out policy for sexually explicit materials. So I have three points that I want to make. I'm going to reiterate some of the points that people behind me have made. But the first one I wanted to make is that I am absolutely against opt-in policy itself. I feel it's a solution looking for a problem. Educators are not gratuitously assigning sexually explicit material. I think we need to trust our educators that if they are assigning something that we might consider sexually explicit, there is a pedagogical reason for that. So I feel switching it to an opt-in policy is a slap in the face of our educators. I think we need to trust our trained teachers, that they're going to do the best for our Secondly, I, like the speakers before me, object to city council overstepping its mandate. We have a lot of work to do as a city, hence the public hearings we saw, we sat through this evening. We have a lot of investment in this city. We all want to see the city succeed. And so I suggest that city council focus on its mandate and helping draw investments into the city, helping the city expand, and being the best that Lynchburg can be. Doesn't need to do school board's job as well. And then third, I have a procedural objection, or maybe it's a question. I have an objection to items being introduced at the very last minute into work sessions with no public comment, and city council meeting agendas being amended at the very last minute. I'm assuming it is legal because you have council here, but is it best practice? Is it really best practice? And is it the way that we want to govern our city, to not allow citizens to have input and to be able to participate through public comment? So that is all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Okay, we will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Clay Williams.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing me. My name is Clay Williams. I'm a resident homeowner, taxpayer in Lynchburg. One of my children is a graduate of LCS, and the other is a student at EC glass. Let's talk about the letter. You guys have put it on the general business for coming up next. LCS adopted the opt-out policy for sexually explicit material on January 10th of this year, as required by SB 656. It was pushed through by Governor Youngkin. The policy requires that any educational material containing sections with sexually explicit material be made known to parents and give parents sufficient time to review the material themselves in order to make the decision of whether they want to opt their child out of that assignment or not. Parental rights. This policy's been in place for 14 days. It's barely had time to go into effect, and you guys want to ask the school board to change it. Changing it to an opt-in policy that places a big burden on LCS teachers and on LCS families. I send my children to LCS, I'm already opting in to the instructional materials that are chosen by LCS professionals. If and when something is deemed sexually explicit, I get to review the material. I will review the material and the materials that are going to be chosen by LCS teachers and professionals. If and when something is deemed sexually explicit, that's it. Certified educators have professional training and continuing education requirements. They're the best resource for instructional decisions, and any materials they use in the classroom must align and support state standards. I make a choice for my own child whether I feel it's important. Opt-in policies tell teachers they cannot be trusted to make decisions for their students. They tell parents that they cannot be trusted to make decisions for their own children, and they tell parents and teachers that the government's got to make the decisions for them. Send a letter to the LCS if you like. Tell them that you support them, you thank them for all the work they do, the administration, the teachers, the school board. Tell them thank you very much for everything you do for supporting our children and everything that you have done over the years. That's the letter you should send when you go to general business after this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Williams. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Jen Staton or Statton?
Staton.
Staton, okay.
Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jennifer Staton. I'm here as a mother of an LCS graduate, a mother of a 12th grader, and someone who has been active and passionate volunteer in Lynchburg City Schools for 16 years. I am asking council not to support Councilman Missions' request for council to send a letter pressuring the school board to create an opt-in policy that goes beyond what Governor Youngkin's opt-out policy does. As an advocate for public education, I always try to look at issues through a lens of equity. Let me be clear, opt-in policies censor learning opportunities for every student, where opt-out policies give all students access to material unless parents choose for them not to participate, which they can easily do through the parent portal already in place that LCS uses for other opt-out forms during the registration process. An opt-in policy would mean teachers would have to get permission slips for everything from teaching kindergartners about baby penguins to doing a novel study about To Kill a Mockingbird in the eighth grade. Precious educational time would be wasted as teachers tried to track down missing permission slips before starting lessons. Research by PEN America shows that book bans or efforts to make materials less accessible with excessive limitations, such as the opt-in policy that Councilman Missions is asking you to support, have, that have happened over the past two years in America, concluded that there is a disproportionate targeting of books by or about people whose identities and stories have traditionally been underrepresented in children and young adult literature, such as people of color, LGBTQ plus individuals, or persons with disabilities. Last night, I had the honor of hearing Dr. Salam of the Central Park Exonerated Five's presentation at Randolph College. As I was listening to him, he said, "We didn't know what to do. Fifteen-year-olds don't understand Miranda rights." I was thinking about that list of books that the conservative parents of Lynchburg Group sent our school board and that they are so worried about. On that list was the book Miranda Rights: Protecting the Rights of the Accused. I, for one, want 15-year-olds to know about and understand their Miranda rights. The policy that Councilman Missions is pushing for appears to be rooted in racism, gender discrimination, and ableism. There is no place for even the appearance of that mindset in Lynchburg City Government or in Lynchburg City Public Schools. Please do not support Councilman Missions in sending this letter to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Staton. Okay, we will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Erin Rup.
Hello, everyone. I wanted to start out by saying thank you for hearing me on this matter because recently I didn't actually have the opportunity to speak my voice regarding the Second Amendment Sanctuary City vote, which was decided in a work meeting without truly allowing time for public comment. This did not seem democratic. It felt like an abuse of power. And I would like to ask that moving forward, the council allow time for Lynchburg residents to have their voices heard. I am against opt-in as it censors the learning opportunities for every student, whereas opt-out gives all students access to the material. As an educator, this is offensive. This is a statement of mistrust of our educators. Books and educational materials are already given grade-level ratings. Parents shouldn't have to jump through extra hoops to allow their children to have access to age-appropriate materials. This proposal looks like a performative action that is divisive and pandering to a small portion of the population. This is a non-issue, frankly. City council should not take up policies that, by state code, are the responsibility of the school board. Thank you. And Mr. Helderson, if you want 17 cents for your tax increase, there's...
Thank you, Ms. Rup. We will move on to the next section, which is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Agenda item number 13, consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriating $85,000 for the purchase of a drone mobile command response vehicle for the Lynchburg Police Department. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Deputy Chief Ken Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The Lynchburg Police Department was awarded $85,000 through a competitive grant process from the VDM State Homeland Security Program to purchase a drone mobile command response vehicle. Regarding the $85,000 awarded, the LPD will procure and purchase one SUV and equipment. The estimated cost of the vehicle is $44,000, and the estimated cost of the equipment and installation is $41,000, which is fully reimbursable by the grant. No local match is required.
Okay. Thank you very much. This item went to our finance committee today, January 24th, and I will defer to our chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This did go to finance, and unanimously the finance committee recommended approval. And there was discussion about letting the vice mayor be the first to use this command response vehicle, so just want to make that in the public record. Madam Clerk. So on behalf of finance committee, I do so move.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Feraldi. This does not require a second. Is there any discussion? No? Okay, well, please cast your vote. Okay, motion passes, 7-0. We will... We're good? Yes, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Move on to agenda item number 14, consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriating... Oh, yeah, you have to stay up here. This is you, too. Sorry. And appropriating $387,250 to purchase law enforcement, equipment, and technology for the Lynchburg Police Department. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Again, Deputy Chief Ken Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The city of Lynchburg was awarded $387,250 in DCJS American Rescue Plan Act funding for law enforcement, equipment, and technology. This was a non-competitive grant awarded to us with no local match. The LPD plans to use the funding to procure and purchase two-years FUSIS real-time crime center service, a laser scanner for processing crime scenes, five ballistic bunker shields, and three kinetic breaching tools. The cost for the two-year service on the FUSIS is $250,000. The total cost for the laser scanner is $65,500. Total cost for the five ballistic bunker shields, $42,800. And the total cost for the three kinetic breaching tools is $28,950.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Chief Edwards. This item also went to our finance committee today, January 24th, and I will defer to our chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Similarly, this was brought before finance committee, passed unanimously with the recommendation to council for approval, and I so move.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Feraldi. This does not require a second. Is there any discussion? No? Okay, please cast your vote. Okay, motion passes with six votes. Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation, or VDOT, to increase the official city's street lane mileage for reimbursement of highway maintenance funds for fiscal year 2024 by 5.23 lane miles. Hello, Mr. Newland.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. This was before council on January 10th at your work session. And as you mentioned, this is for increasing the street lane mileage by 5.23 miles. Most of these are from the new subdivision, Blackwater Run, for the streets. One street is part, a portion of Liberty Mountain Drive. There's also a section of Mill Lane, and then also changing Lakeside Drive from two lanes to four lanes.
Okay, thank you. As you said, council was previously briefed on this item on January 10th, 2023. Do I have a motion on this item?
So vote.
Okay, second. Okay, great. Any further discussion?
No.
No? Oh, great, let's vote. Thank you, Mr. Newland. Okay, motion passes, six votes. Great. Okay, moving on to the next item. Review and approve the city's finance committee guidelines. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Donawitt.
This did come to finance committee today. The finance committee guidelines are reviewed on a biannual basis with the appointment of the finance committee chair. Following the review today at the finance committee, the guidelines do require approval by full city council, and also required is to set the time and place for the meetings.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Witt. This item went to our finance committee today, January 24th, and I will defer to our chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This again went to finance committee, and the recommendation from the committee was unanimous to recommend approval for the... unanimous to recommend approval for the Finance Committee guidelines, with the time and location being second Tuesday, 3:00, in the Second Room Conference Center.
Fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday. There's too many Tuesdays. Fourth Tuesday, for transparency. So with that in mind, I do so move.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Faraldi. Does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
That was at 3:00. Sorry.
Yes. 3:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday.
I guess just I knew you had a question.
Okay.
Obviously, as I mentioned in my email, that does require council action. I'm just curious about today, you know, some of the meetings that took place today. When I pulled up, you know, obviously, public bodies have got to have proper notification. There's got to be advertisements. I looked on the city website last night, and it still had the meetings being at 11:30 today, both on the, I pulled up last night from the city website, 12323 at 9:46. Do we meet the advertising guidelines of having the meeting as advertised in our city documents and our city website? Because normally, in order, as being done today, in order to change the guidelines, part of the guidelines is the time and location and time of the meeting. That usually has to be done, as we're doing now, rather than having the meeting without maybe advertising. Looked different from what I saw on the web. So, the city website that I'm looking at last night had it still at 11:30.
Yes, please.
First, we need to go out. Announcing that the first meeting would be at 3:00, Second Floor Training Room today. And then the whole point of that was that you would approve the guidelines for the schedule going forward.
But, I mean, you're putting the cart before the horse, because this has to be approved by council, so you can't change the meeting time until it's actually approved. Once, so the first meeting should have been the normal time that was advertised, until council approves the change, which should have been an easy thing to do, rather than changing the time and then asking for permission or approval by full council later, which we're voting on right now.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
I do believe the website, I checked this morning, did say generally meets at 11:30. So, it's my understanding that this was vetted by legal counsel, and we were in proper order to have a meeting at 3:00, and this was solidified moving forward.
Okay, so, the motion on the floor is that the Finance Committee will now meet at the second, at the fourth Tuesday of the month at 3:00 PM. Any more discussion?
And it's also to approve the guidelines.
And to approve the guidelines that were put forward by the Finance Committee.
Was there any changes to the guidelines? I didn't see any strike-throughs.
Yes, there was one recommended change that the Finance Committee did approve, and that was to move the structure and timing of the proposed bond sales from just Finance Committee to go to full council first.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, passes 7-0. Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution amending and reaffirming city council's financial management policies. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Donawitt.
Yes, thank you. City staff and the financial advisors periodically review the financial management policies. The city shall be in complete compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and other regulations and statutes governing the investment of public funds. The financial management policies of fund balance, debt management, and budget have no proposed changes and are recommended to be reaffirmed. The investment policy has revisions based on compliance with the Code of Virginia, and the revisions are noted in your attached document. So, state code does allow three other very specific investment tools. They're on page nine of your attachment in Section Nine for suitable and authorized investments. The first one is to include corporate bonds or notes. The definition is added in the glossary there, and they are very specific to corporate obligations rated AA or higher by Standard and Poor's and AA by Moody's that were issued by a domestic corporation with a net worth of at least $50 million maturing within five years of the date of purchase. Also added for state code was number eight, your pre-refunded obligations of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Virginia Local Government obligations, and then number 11, which is the Virginia Local Government Investment Pool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Witt. This item went to our Finance Committee today, January 24th, and I will defer to our Chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Faraldi.
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor. This did go to Finance Committee and was recommended for approval unanimously, and I so move.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Faraldi. This does not require a second. Any discussion? No? Okay, please cast your vote. Okay, it passes. Okay, moving on. Our concealed weapon permit discussion. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Donawitt.
Okay, part of the Donna Show, sorry. This was another item that council members requested to come before them again for a vote. This is a discussion on the $50 concealed weapon permit. There's a breakout of fees in your handout for $10 for the application fee to the clerk, $35 for the Lynchburg Police Department, $5 to state police for the total of $50. Also, within your packet are the code sections that allows for this $50, and also a chart that contains numbers about how much the PD has gotten in revenue from the $35 that come to them and the actual cost. The $35 currently charged to citizens does not cover the expenses incurred for even our lowest-paid officers. They receive one hour of overtime per background investigations, and if the fee is lowered to $15, the funding for the LPD's expenses related to background investigations will need to be absorbed in the current police department budget without offsetting revenues. And this item did go to Finance Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. This item went to our Finance Committee today, January 24th, and I will defer to our Chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Faraldi.
Once again, thank you, Madam Mayor. This item did come before Finance Committee today. It was recommended to council for adoption by a vote of two to one, and I do so move.
Okay, this does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
And speaking to the motion, Madam Mayor, this has been something that I know we have been looking to adopt. For me, it removes barriers for law-abiding citizens to obtain concealed carry or weapons permit to protect themselves. This makes Lynchburg one of, if not the most cost-effective and friendly policies for obtaining a concealed carry permit in the Commonwealth of Virginia. $14 million of additional revenue, or otherwise known as taxes or surplus, should more than cover the $38,000 associated with the police department and the funds needed to move forward with this process. The quickest first responders to tragic and horrific scenes are you and me, if we are able to step up and do things to protect those we love. This is mostly for abiding, for those who are mostly abiding, excuse me, for those who are abiding by our laws and statutes. This makes it easier for you to obtain the required documentation to protect yourself on a daily basis for no more than $15. This pushes more people to train, too. If more people are obtaining this permit, they must go to training, as outlined in state code, and utilize small businesses just down the street about how to best handle and utilize that firearm if ever needed. So, within those parameters, I'm more ecstatically here to speak in favor and bring it forward as a recommendation from Finance Committee, and I appreciate the discussion we had, albeit with a little bit of disagreement, but I thank you all.
Madam Mayor, just for purposes of clarification, is the recommendation to adopt the, excuse me, the uncodified ordinance that speaks to charging, refraining from charging any fee versus a cap on the fee?
My apologies, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you for correcting me. This was recommended by a vote of two-one to adopt draft ordinance number one in your packets, which would set the local rate to zero. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you. Yeah, this is fantastic. You know, it's interesting, very thankful to read the report from the LPD today that talked about an arrest of an individual just today, a person that shot somebody and killed somebody over at the Dollar General. And I know lots of times, people who aren't very familiar with weapons, they just think, "Oh, my goodness, somebody shot somebody." But what is every one of these, or probably 90% of when they actually finally arrest somebody who's committed a heinous crime or murdered somebody like this one? There's always this charge in here. Possession of a firearm by a convicted felon. This just happened, it just came out today. I'm thankful that LPD caught them, or caught this individual, arrested them, but that's normally what happens. And so, we definitely, by saying, "Let's not have the highest fee in the entire, that's allowed by the Commonwealth. Let's make it the lowest. Let's actually allow our citizens to protect themselves. Let's allow, let's not have a barrier in between," because we're seeing lots of crime going around the city. And I certainly love to see law-abiding citizens protecting themselves, their families, their loved ones. This makes it where there's extra funds rather than more fees that are going to the city. They can use those fees to get good training. They can use that to actually go to Tefor Tactics and go get some extra training so they know fully well how to defend themselves and their families. I'm thankful that we're going to turn the corner on, instead of being, every fee that we have in Lynchburg is the highest, the maximum allowed, now we're going to try to be competitive, because we recognize that law-abiding citizens are trying to defend themselves, and we don't want to get in a fee in the way. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilder?
So, the motion is for it to be $0? So...
The local fee to be zero, it would still be $15 to obtain the permit.
And the cost, from my understanding, the fee we had wasn't currently covering the cost of the service. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
So, the difference then for the cost of that is it coming from the policeman's budget?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anyway, I'm leaving that there. But my other challenge is, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands, there was another report from the police department that mentioned that the majority of those guns, there were illegal guns, were stolen from, like people's cars or people's houses. So, we've got to really stress the persons. You've got to make sure you're securing your firearm. That's how there's so many illegal guns on our street, that juveniles are getting them and other persons are getting them, because there are guns that have been stolen from cars or stolen from houses. Like we mentioned last, the other week, the gun in Newport News was, mother said it was legally purchased, but somehow, the six-year-old still got the gun. You know, so we just want to just encourage people to please be careful in securing those weapons, make sure they're not just out in your glove compartment of your car, where somebody can steal. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Missions?
I just think it's great that we're able to do this. You know, I started serving in the military as a firearms instructor in about 2003, and there's nothing that replaces safety than proficiency, actually training with firearm. So, for somebody to be able to take the extra funds that it would have cost to get the permit, now they can apply that to ammunition or training to be able to be more proficient with their firearm and be able to safely handle it. So, I'm going to vote in support of this measure, and I would like to see us in the future, maybe even lobby Richmond for constitutional carry in Virginia.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Bennet?
Madam Mayor, we had this conversation about finance earlier, and I can't remember if it associated my comments then, but at least I think I've been kind of level with everybody as far as kind of when and how, right? And so, separating out the fee and what it's for and anything, and all the things that were said, what I need to reflect to you and your peers as a professional manager is that mid-fiscal year, it's, we propose on adopt a budget that runs July 1 through June 30. And in that adopted budget, it's balanced, and it shows projected revenues. And I know Vice Mayor Faraldi explained that there are, you know, certain revenues above that are surplus, and that can help kind of offset expenses. I do think, whether or not it's a fee like what we're discussing right now, that may be de minimis, $50, or even the next piece that we're going to take up, which could be in the millions, that to mid-fiscal year, outside of a fiscal adoption, fiscal budget adoption process that looks at all these things in the aggregate, because Councilman Helgason brought up the different fees and where they are, that in a comprehensive approach to a structured, a proposed budget that needs to be balanced, you can look at all these. And I would say that in mid-fiscal year, with an adopted budget, even though that the revenues are small, and what they are, I just would caution us to think through some of this as we move forward, because we are on the doorstep of the fiscal '24 adoption, budget adoption process, and we're going to revisit many of these same things that were being talked about right now. I would offer, in that process that gives everybody time to think, I will say, I've been somewhat reactionary on some of the requests, we've been hustling to basically live in fiscal '23 and also think about fiscal '24. That's why we're going to have, I've proposed in a budget retreat for us on February 10th. So, nothing to say about the fees, all the different comments that are being said. I just want to kind of position that just as something for you and your peers to contemplate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, motion passes 5 to 2. All right, moving on to agenda item 19, Real Estate Rate Reduction Discussion. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Donawitt.
City council members requested a discussion on reducing the real estate tax rate to be added to the agenda. This request includes reducing the rate from $1.11 per $100 of assessed value to $1.3, dated back to November 2021, or reducing the rate to 99 cents as a date council chooses to apply prospectively. City Attorney is here to let you know the process and what that looks like for both of those. The impact of a dollar, from $1.11 to $1.3 is $4.8 million, and the effective rate to 99 cents would require $7.2 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Okay, this item went to our Finance Committee today, January 24th, and I will defer to our Chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Faraldi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item was discussed as presented. I think input from the City Attorney would be value-add for this discussion for the council members who were not there. However, the Finance Committee did make a recommendation by a vote of two to one, and I'll make it as a motion as follows. Finance Committee recommends to Lynchburg City Council that they direct city staff to provide creative, effective, and legal options for the associated real estate increase as presented to council. And I will make that as a motion.
Okay, this does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
Speaking to the motion, within the heart of the motion, I would like to offer expectations, at least from my part that I shared at the committee. The expectation would be that, as we move into this discussion with the upcoming budget, we look back at the years with this associated increase and allocate accordingly, either credits, various means, tax, checks, sending them back, whatever it may look like. I want to know all options on the table for getting these funds back. And so, that speaks to the heart of the motion, and at least my expectations moving into the budget process. And I would ask the City Attorney if he could speak to why this was brought to us with the proposals discussed at our previous meeting.
Sure. So, council members wanted the proposals of reducing the real estate tax rate, I believe it was to either 99 cents to apply prospectively, or to reduce it to $1.3, $1.3 cents, apply retroactively back to November 2021. So...
So, I'll try to dissect both of those options, so council will, when they make a decision, be able to talk it through. So, the option where the real estate tax rate would be reduced from $1.11 to $1.3 with retroactive application in November 2021, in my opinion, and as I understand it from speaking with city leadership and staff, isn't something that would be practical at this point to do, if council was to take action today. And I say that because, as I understand it from what our finance team has determined is, per the requirements of 15.2-2511.1, there isn't necessarily a surplus that would meet those amounts, that would be refunded from a retroactive tax refund. And even if it did, assume that it did, and assume council found that there was in fact a surplus as it relates to what would be refunded in doing an ordinance like that, that code section I cited requires a method ordinance to be in place before a vote to change the tax rate that would result in a refund from a surplus.
Which code section was that?
It's 15.2-2511.1. A method ordinance, as I said, would need to be in place to account for a proper procedure in returning those monies to citizens if there was a retroactive effect or a retroactive refund to go back. Now, what was presented as likely if this was something that council wanted to act more quickly on, without having to go through a method ordinance, without having to go through a process or the determination of a surplus, would be as if council were to drop the real estate tax rate as it contemplated to say $1.99, $1.3, $1.5, whatever, but apply it prospectively. Now, how council applies that will determine the Virginia procedure that would be applicable to that tax decrease. If it were to, if the ordinance was to be amended to apply mid-year, that is mid-fiscal year, council would need to do a budget amendment that would essentially, if it's over 1% of the total expenditures in the budget, as it's related to revenues that are foregone, there would need to be notice, a public hearing, and then a budget amendment to either be done before, simultaneously with, or immediately after the amendment of that tax rate. If council was to make it effective for the next fiscal year, then it could be part of the proposed future budget process, that is, the public hearing that would be associated with the normal budget process, the appropriation process associated with that. And I say that not necessarily to show where staff's thoughts are or any recommendation, but just to tell you what the options on the table are, okay? So, that's kind of where I'm at, as far as what would be required if you were to do retroactive, mid-fiscal year, which hypothetically you could make it effective today, and then we would have to be accounting for that budget amendment, which would likely be impractical, because we have to advertise the public hearing and be prepared to offset those foregone revenues, or, as I said, the third option would be the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I may have misspoke earlier, forgive me, I'm a little tired. So, in summary, I do want to thank the members of the Finance Committee for unanimously supporting this, Councilmembers Taylor and Dolan. The motion is simple but firm, and it sets the path forward for where council can go, I think unanimously, about how to engage this fiscal conversation. It sets the path for council to adopt bold tax relief in this upcoming budget, looking back to the numbers associated with how we got here, and instead of just looking backward, we're looking forward about how to make sure we're doing this the right way. We need, we need to do more, in my mind, this isn't the end of the conversation. If our projections are right with real estate, they're going to be through the roof. So, I firmly believe that this is something all of us can get behind, it's not a commitment for one council member or another about how the dollars will make their way back, it's simply to say, we want to know all the options on the table, and if folks disagree about one tactic or another, we can have that discussion. But this today puts us on that path forward, and I'm pleased to say that it comes to council unanimously, I hope it passes in the same manner. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilman Higginson, sorry.
Thank you. You know, I guess this is a non-starter. We look back at fiscal year 2021, tax increase, $4.8 million. We budgeted for a $22 million cushion, a $22 million emergency fund, a $22 million that said, hey, this is what our emergency is. Do you know what the emergency was? The emergency fund? Actually came in at more than double, came in at 49 and 1/2 million. Okay? Let's go forward to last year, this year that just ended fiscal, the fiscal year 2022, which just ended July, or June 30th. The budget, what was the budget for the emergency fund? The cushion, 23 million this year. Okay? So that's the emergency, that's the safety net that's built into the budget. What did it come in as? Double would have been 46 million. Is that not enough? How about triple? Triple would have been 69 million. It was almost triple, it was $66 million over and above what the cushion was. With that, I've been talking about this for actually the last year and a half, where this previous city council voted to raise taxes totally needlessly on our citizens, especially when it was three times your cushion, not enough? We now have this budget year, just finished this last June, this fiscal year, $43 million over and above the cushion that was there. Easy, easy, 100% unanimous should have been to say, let's at least give back the tax increase, that unnecessary tax increase. I heard, we first brought up the proposal to lower it so we could actually go back last year, but council kept kicking the can and saying, oh, we'll do it another time, we'll do it later, oh yeah, we'll get to it, we'll get it next budget. Enough. This is two years of record surpluses, two years of where the citizens were taxed a lot more than they should have, during a pandemic no less. And what do we do? We kick the can. So, I came up with the secondary proposal that said, hey, we're not going to go back last year, we're not going to go back and try to amend last year, because I heard staff saying, hey, that may be kind of difficult, let's do it in this current fiscal year. I brought this up actually before the first bills went out, November 15th. But it kept getting pushed off. Now we have a council that campaigned on fiscal sanity and taxes are too high, and bring back to our citizens, let's rein in some spending, let's give back the tax increase to our citizens, and let's do this effective November 1st, 2022. Lower it to 99 cents, you actually have that cushion that is virtually almost triple what was planned on. The money is there in order to give it back. Guess what's going to happen in a couple months? Couple months from now, we're going to have something else that happens. And that's what they're trying to kick the can down the road, to say, let's just wait, because we'll have a reassessment. What happens in the reassessment? The reassessment's going up 10, 20%. Bedford County just looked at it 30%. So now you're going to say, oh, so rather than overtaxing our citizens' last two years and at least giving back one year of that unnecessary real estate tax increase, we're going to actually just kick it off and say, hey, we're going to do it later. That is wrong, we have the funds there, we had the $43 million surplus over and above that $23 million budgeted cushion. Easy enough to do, because those funds have not been spent, because council hasn't voted to spend those. We can actually do this and make this effective November 1st of 2022. We can actually do what we campaigned on, we can actually do, not just even a campaign. So I get that, if you campaigned on something that you said, oops, I was wrong. The reality of it is, we look at what's happened with these high taxes in Lynchburg. Those of you who lived here a long time, look at what's happened to Forest. Think about where Forest was 20 years ago, 30 years ago. It was cow fields. What is it now? The more taxes we raise in Lynchburg, the more you find, and I know some people don't understand supply-side economics, but the more we raise taxes, what happens is it goes elsewhere. And you've looked at the massive growth. Every time we raise taxes, I got buddies on the Board of Supervisors in Bedford County and Campbell County. Every time they raise taxes, guess what they're doing? It means more revenues go into them, because sadly, we've made ourselves not be competitive. Granted, we can wait and do this another six months down the road, or wait till the budget, and then kind of say, oh, look at what I'm for. Rather than reining in the spending, we should set the tax rate effective November 1st of 2022 as 99 cents. We talked about the numbers, it's not giving back the entire cushion, and double the cushion, and triple the cushion of $43 million, it's giving back the unnecessary tax increase. That can be effective right away. So I'll make an amendment to the substitute motion that we set the tax rate at 99 cents November 1st of 2022.
Second.
With that being the case, this isn't another kick the can, this is serious, folks. This isn't politics, this isn't gotcha, this isn't whatever. If we, I've heard people say that we want what's best for the city. We want what's best for the city is making us competitive. We want to make sure that we are the best place. We start actually looking out for our citizens and our taxpayers, we're going to watch the coffers and the city revenue continue to grow. Because rather than folks with means that are moving to Forest and moving to Campbell and moving out of the city, we're going to have property values increasing, we're going to have folks and companies come back, because they're seeing growth and prosperity. And so, I just think this is fairly an easy one. We're not giving back the full 43 million, we're giving back a fraction, we're giving back a little bit of that tax increase, we're not even giving back the full unnecessary tax increase with the 7.2 million. So I certainly hope you can support this. I hope we can get on board with this ASAP. I recognize what our City Attorney said, Mr. Friedman, about the budget amendment. I asked repeatedly, when you lower the taxes, there's no requirement for a public hearing? When you're going to change the budget, great, we can do that as a public hearing. Let's do the budget amendment as a public hearing, but let's hit the tax rate first, let's look at the revenue as. Let's say, no more of this unnecessary tax increase, we're giving it back, and we're moving the city forward progressively, and allow it to grow and take off that weight. You guys are going to be very delighted when you start looking at the city in five years, once we start looking out for our citizens, once we look out for our taxpayers. We're going to watch growth, and we're going to say, wow, didn't think that would work so good. And you're going to be very delighted and watch the city grow and prosper like never before. Let's be competitive. And what a message that would send. You know, I've been here on council for almost 20 years, before me, we've, I don't know how long it's been that the tax rates have been less than three digits. Wouldn't that be nice to set the tax rate at 99 cents? Wouldn't that be nice to set it at double digits and be done? So, I hope you'll support this. Thank you.
Councilman Mishers, do I speak to your second?
Absolutely. Taxes are way too high in Lynchburg. Our citizens are feeling the burden of poor economic policy from Washington that's squeezing their wallets. Everything's going up in prices, eggs, gas, groceries, goods, all of it. And we've watched businesses leave our city and go across the line into Bedford County, because they've simply had enough with our outrageous tax rates in the city of Lynchburg. And the best example I can give you of that is look at Burglary Toyota. Used to sit on Ward's Road, right? Now it's moved out on 221, across the city line in Bedford County. And we lost all that revenue on personal property, on vehicles, all of it. Right, the building's still there, whoever owns it's paying the real estate tax on that. But, we're watching businesses and revenue in our coffers move out of the city, because we are overtaxing citizens and businesses. We added last year with 66 million in the unassigned fund balance. That was supposed to be 23 million, Councilman Higginson spoke to that earlier. That means our citizens were overtaxed by 43 million. Now's the time to take bold action on the taxes in our city. I'm not talking about one-time credits through water bills or other political gimmicks that check a box, like a motion to say, staff, give us ideas. I'm talking about doing it tonight. I'm talking about putting our citizens ahead of this government and this bureaucracy, and putting our citizens first, and our citizens' wallets first. I'm talking about real conservative fiscal policy that tells our citizens, we want more money in their wallets, not the government's. The policy will lead to more real estate investment in our city. I talked to a downtown building owner on the way in here and said, hey, we're going to try to get this done for you tonight. And he said, great, I can't wait, let's get it done, because we can invest more in our city when we lower that rate. This policy will be great for individuals, families, and businesses, and it will invite people to invest inside the city limits instead of outside. We can adopt this rate change tonight. We don't need to give city staff more time, and we don't need to cave to the delay tactics of the bureaucracy and the vice mayor. There's no requirement for a public hearing to lower the rate. I'm reading it right here, Section 58.1-3007. Before any local tax levy shall be increased in any county, city, or town or district, it's got to be published and we got to have a meeting. That is not what we're doing. We're lowering the rate. The budget amendment will come down the road. The budget amendment will require a public hearing. But we're not doing that tonight. We're just lowering the rate, and lowering the rate does not require a public hearing. We're functioning the same way we would in the budget process. We adopt the rate of 99 cents tonight for the current fiscal year, then staff will have to come forward with an amended budget for our approval. That will require a public hearing, so we'll have a discussion about the amended budget. And then staff can take direction to amend the budget after we set the rate tonight. The question that I ask my Republican colleague is simple, do you believe in what you campaigned on? Do you believe in what you told the citizens you would do? Do you want to keep your promises to the voters that elected you? I do. One-time credits through water bills is not the answer to meaningful and lasting tax relief. Political delay tactics and gimmicks to say, we're going to put bold tax relief forward, is not the answer. And that's what we just saw tonight. I'm so proud that Jeff Higginson is over here, strong enough and courageous enough to stand up and actually stand for the citizens. He's been doing it for 18 years, and I'm honored to be standing beside here to help him. We actually need to address the outrageous tax rates in our city to unleash the private sector and create real growth by empowering citizens and businesses to invest in Lynchburg. Now maybe, my colleagues don't understand supply-side economics, but it works. I'll be supporting this measure, and we can get it done tonight, and I hope that they will join me. Because taxes in our city are simply way too high, and I believe in citizens more than government.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
There are times in this role where telling those who politically align with you that they are wrong is required. And I believe this is one of those times. I do not believe this is the right way to do it. And if it's another couple of Facebook memes or conspiracies within the political ranks of the Lynchburg Republican unit to throw bombs at each other to try to make this whole thing fall apart, and then blame me and blame you and all that, you know what? Bring it on. I firmly believe this is the right thing to do, and if getting criticisms from Councilmember Mishers is what it takes, listen, I take that as a five-point bump and war for. I fundamentally believe the right thing to do here is to address it in the upcoming budget. If you disagree with me, that's okay. But I stand ready to work with everyone here to accomplish that same thing. Is it a different tactic? It's a different tactic. If that means I lose my position in two years, I can walk away with my head held high that I did what I believe was right. And to question, you know, whether or not I will deliver on this, my goodness, yours truly helped deliver the most tax relief through a credit, yes, in the previous budget, $1.2 million. I'd like to point out, you know, if we're going to start throwing records and positions out there... out there, the highest surpluses the city's ever seen, the highest increased, uh, unpredicted revenue this city has seen has been under the chairmanship of, of Councilmember Helgason as the Finance Committee Chair. I mean, if we're really going to call balls and strikes, these things have happened under the, the stewardship of Councilmember Helgason. And, and so if I'm going to be honest and call balls and strikes, I will walk away from this day as my head held high. I'm not going to call names. I'm not going to put memes on Facebook. I'll say what I think and what I believe, and if you disagree and you're going to vote against me for it, that's okay. And I'm so sorry that this is what it's come to.
The Academy Award.
So, oh, you want the Academy Award? I'll tell you that Academy Award.
I'm not talking about that. I'm not getting.
With all due respect, I, the problems within this political culture in this day and age is that if you don't do exactly what I think, how I say it, when I say it, and the exact same verbiage I do, that's a problem, folks. And I know exactly, tonight or tomorrow morning, these two are going to hop on Morning Line, Facebook, and run my name through the mud. I don't care. It doesn't bother me. I think this is the right thing to do. If I lose the vote, I lose the vote. You're still going to see me vote in the end to get it done. You're still going to see the money coming back. Yeah, it might be through a water tax credit or removing the trash fee or lowering your property tax, your personal property tax on your car. Forgive me for wanting to do it in as many ways as possible. The 99 cent thing, by the way, probably isn't even close with what it should be. It should probably be more than that because of what's happening moving forward. I want to know all the things going on. I don't want to vote for something without knowing exactly what's in it. I, I want to direct city staff to do this, and I would note, that recommendation passed on a bipartisan basis from Finance Committee. You know, y'all don't intimidate me. The only thing I know is I'm doing what I believe to be right, and we need more of that in politics than anything else.
Councilmember Wilder. Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. I do just want to add, as I mentioned, with the retroactive effect of a, a tax, a tax lowering that would result, at least from what I understand from speaking with our chief financial officer, likely a rebate or something else, that has to be established by ordinance as part of this process. And I keep, I keep harping on that because I offer this as a word of caution. When we don't follow the rules that the General Assembly has given us, they're usually determined to be void. And what I don't want to see is something happen in the audit or whatever else that may be a significant amount of money, a significant amount of money where we have to go back and clean things up and do something differently, whatever it may be. Certainly, council can make the decision to determine a surplus exists if it doesn't want to go by staff's recommendation, you know, but I would caution city council not to establish a retroactive ordinance like this without having a method in place.
So we're talking about this fiscal year, though? That's the new?
This fiscal year.
It's this fiscal year?
Would be this fiscal year, but your proposed motion is retroactive to November 1, 2022?
Because this proposed motion has been going on since July 1st of 2022. So the delays happen, and every delay that happens, it gets pushed off longer.
I can't speak to the reasons it's, it's pushed. I just have, have to, I have to advise this to the procedure.
Councilman Wilder.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. You know, one thing, I just want to get some clarification. Now, the tax rate is $1.11, correct? The tax rate stayed the same, has been the same for several years. It did not increase, but the property value increased. So the tax rate has not increased, the tax rate stayed the same. The property value went and increased. I want to make sure persons understand the tax rate did not increase. We did not do a tax increase from that. The property value increased. Secondly, you know, I'm hearing about people leaving the city because the tax rate is so high. I thought the system said that our city was growing, so I'm confused. And then I look at our ward, the Timberlake area, and we talk about all the traffic, all the house, apartments being built, all the growth is in Timberlake. So it's, I'm getting mixed messages. People are leaving the city, but yet we're building more apartments. We're having more traffic problems. We have to limit the number of apartments that are being built because it's too many apartments and too much growth in that area. But then we're saying, oh, people are leaving the city and grows. So I'm getting mixed messages. So I want to make sure when we're reporting things, the media's here, make sure we understand we have two messages here. There's, there's great growth in our city. The city is growing. The tax rate stayed the same. There are mixed messages being said. I want to make sure we're telling both stories, both sides of the story, that the city is growing. If you look downtown over the past 20 years, if you look at the growth on Main Street, Church Street, Jefferson Street, we didn't have all that, with Amazement Square, the academy, we didn't have all that growth over 20 years ago. But we can look at our city and see the growth that we have, the persons coming into the city, and also the great events that are going forth, where it's more of a destination site now because of all the exciting places, new restaurants that are developing in our city. Business developers have benefited very, very greatly because of all the investment that's been made in our community. The property value has increased for downtown. So we can see all the growth that we have. People have been leaving the city. People have been coming to the city. People have making investments into our community. So we need to make sure we're telling both, both sides of the story when we look at that great growth. I'm so thankful that I live in a city where I can go downtown at various restaurants. 20 years ago, I could not do that. 20 years ago, it was all the abandoned buildings. You look at these million-dollar lofts that are downtown now. Whoever would have thought of the million-dollar loft in Lynchburg, Virginia because of the growth and the investment that businesses have made in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I mean, Mr., Mr. City Manager. Do you think you can give me a balanced budget with a tax decrease?
Let me see if I, can I give you a balanced budget? You mean in fiscal '24 with a tax increase?
Decrease.
Decrease. Yes, I can. I mean, that's, I have to pursuant to state code. We would walk you through a process. I hear loud and clear that there's a request for tax relief in, in different iterations, whether or not it's real estate or other. So the process would be in fiscal '24. What I propose is we work from that $1.11 and then show you what the services are. I think there's a conversation to say, well, not the dollar, but I need to level set kind of your expectations on what services you want to provide and what those look like, right? Because there's certain services that are expected by our residents. And from that, begin to build a budget that looks at all the different things that you discussed this evening and the importance, the initiatives that you want to accomplish and candidly, the other things that you want to do. So yes, I have to pursuant to state code or else.
Because we, we promised our citizens a tax decrease.
Understood.
And that's what I want.
Understood.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Can I clarify that Councilman Taylor asked you if you could balance the budget in this next year's fiscal budget with a decrease? Is that what you asked him?
That's what I asked.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So I'll just.
Councilman Helgason.
So, so with the reduction in the, the real estate tax rate in this budget year, you can actually come up with a budget, a budget that balances as well?
Yes.
Good.
Councilman Dole?
No, I'm just processing. So I would like to address our city attorney, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So my biggest issue, I think, with all of this is the retroactive piece. Because yes, we did tell people in the city that we wanted to deliver tax relief. And I don't consider myself a liar if I do that retroactively, currently, or in the future budget. If I deliver tax relief in any form, yesterday, tomorrow, or next year, I'm delivering on what I told people I would do. So I'm not lying. I want to do it the right way. So my issue with the retroactive piece is that there are obviously some, some issues with that. The ordinance required, designating it, designating it surplus funds. If there aren't surplus funds, I mean, it just seems like it's a more convoluted way to do things with more risk involved. If we go back before, like before today, correct? Then there's a version that would start today going forward, correct? That was another option?
Yes, ma'am.
Today going forward, which would then involve having to balance a budget in the middle of the fiscal year. Can you explain again what, what roadblocks that would involve aside from balancing the budget in the middle of the fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the procedural component with that is if the tax rate was lowered to a degree that it would cause foregone revenues that would essentially require us to move money in the budget that would exceed 1% of the total expenditures in the current budget. It requires notice, a public hearing, and obviously appropriation resolutions that have two readings. So that is something we would have to do mid-year as part of this particular process. Whereas if it was addressed in option number three, in the next fiscal year, it could all be done at once as part of the budget process.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Helgason.
So with that, we have bills, the, the real estate tax bills that are due November 15th. So if we would have adopted this November 5th, we'd have been ahead. If the second bill that's due January 15th, we'd have adopted it last meeting, January 10th, we would have been ahead. Now, again, pushing things off makes things that much more difficult. Because if you're saying you have to do this ahead of time, which you've, hadn't said that before, I understand the budget amendment element. But if we can set that rate and quit putting this off, because we're going to be sitting around and talking again next week, next month, two months from now, and say, well, 2024, man, that, that budget, let's, let's, let's lower the rate there. Okay. Or let's actually not increase taxes. You know, we're not, even this, what we're talking about here, is not a tax reduction. It is just saying we're going to give back the unnecessary tax increase. The longer we wait on this, the more that we say, hey, let's delay it, let's come back with something. This 1115 payment, the January 15 payment, the 315 real estate tax payment, the May 15, we're going to keep on going. Let's, let's just do the real estate tax relief for our citizens and recognize that we have a surplus that was almost three times the budgeted cushion. If there was never a time to do it, if there was ever a time to do it, now is the time. We got the cash. We got a reassessment year coming up in two months where property values are going to be going up 10%, 20%. And I, I would hope that at that time, council would, would not be wanting to raise the real estate tax on our citizen yet again. Let's do this now. Let, let's just figure out how we can do this to give back our citizens. I, I certainly hope you can support this.
Councilman Missions.
I can agree with Councilmember Helgason more on this, that now is, now's the time to do it and get it done. My mom lives in Bedford County, right across the city line, and I watched her assessment come in just a few weeks ago, and it went from 272,000 to $377,000. Right? And that's what's coming for Lynchburg. 10 to 20% is, is a conservative estimate, but we're probably looking at higher reassessments, much higher reassessments than that. What'd you think, Mr. Benda?
Easily 20.
Easily 20.
In certain areas.
And we've got to get this rate under control right now. We've got to, we've got to, to reverse the failed policy of high taxation that has plagued our city and reverse it right now tonight and get this going forward. Because when those assessments come through, we're going to be looking at it again, and we're going to have to equalize, or we're going to be doing another tax increase. And I appreciate Dr. Wilder's comments over there, but a tax increase because of a reassessment is still a tax increase. While it's not a rate increase, it is still a tax increase. And I believe I sent you that article from the Maryland Public Policy Institute, and they even say that one of the most equitable things that we can do for lower-income parts of our community is lower the real estate tax rate. Lower the real estate tax rate. The information is out there. This is going to be tremendous and extraordinary for our community. The question is, do we have the leadership in this body tonight to get it done? And I believe we do. But what I'm concerned is that we don't have the courage. And, and, and that's what I would like to see. I know that there are a few of us that have the courage to do this tonight and get this done, and we trust that our professional manager can bring us back an amended budget that will be balanced, that will work. And then we'll do the proper process, we'll have the public hearings for the amended budget, and we'll move forward. And we will deliver to our citizens, and we will start focusing on our citizens instead of the government. And that would just be a tremendous thing. So I just really hope that we can get this done tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Faraldi and then.
So we can trust the vice, we can trust the city manager to, to produce those results, but we can't trust the city manager to produce the real, results moving forward? With that in mind, I move to pending question.
Okay. I would just like to say one more thing before we vote. I, I am not comfortable with the retroactive piece. I do support lowering taxes. I don't, I don't like the tape that comes with the retroactive piece, and that's really my biggest concern about that motion. I, we're at the Finance Committee meeting, and I, and I heard both Vice Mayor Faraldi and Councilman Taylor agree with the original motion, and I, I did support that earlier. With that said, let's cast our votes on the amended motion. Sorry?
Madam Mayor, just one item then. If that is the hangup, I, I will amend my motion to, to have it not go back to 1112022, but I'll have it be effective today, which is.
Second.
Which is my birthday. I should know that date. January 24th. So in order to quell your, your, your concern about going retroactive, we'll actually amend the motion to be as effective today, January 24th. Thank you.
And floor for the second. Fully support that plan. I think that that's a good compromise. If that is your concerns that you just told us, you want to provide tax relief.
That was my concern with the retroactive, and I also expressed my concerns about the, the concerns I addressed about going forward today as well.
Okay. Well, we, we eliminated the concerns about the retroactive. I believe that that's a fair, good, fair compromise and.
Does anybody have any discussion on the, the newly amended motion? Yes, Dr. Wilder.
This is sad. I don't see where that's making a difference. I think it's, I think we're in the same situation. Is that correct?
I'm trying to track all the different.
Yeah.
Me too. Iterations. The difference here in how the city attorney describes it on a prospective component, it's that, it's that up or down 1%. And so where I think the, there's a discussion under state law as to whether or not there's a surplus, if it's 21 as opposed to 22, that provision is instigated. This other provision that he cites, that percentage up or down, prospectively, you can amend mid-year to do so. I've, I've told you professionally why, you know, how that works. But it's, Dr. Wilder, it would be that perspective, but that would then instigate or require the public hearing and some other things to, to meet the state statute. Have I answered your question?
I'm not sure. And I think that's going to cut us down to about $4 million instead of 7.2 because we're about halfway through the year.
B36.
Plus, yeah.
Just so, to make sure I'm clear, but you would still have to change your whole budget because those expenses, that revenue hasn't been considered.
You and your peers would then direct me to work with staff to figure out that provision and, and figure out how to accomplish. Because essentially what's happening is you're, you're unbalancing an adopted budget. And so because of that, that percentage, that then, if you do so, then we would then have to pivot to figure out where those resources come from and bring you back your options on how best to rebalance the budget.
And the, the last part of the question, has this ever been done? Have you ever seen this done anywhere?
I've been in local government for 20-plus years, and, and not to say, and I, I don't want to put in too much. And not to say, and I don't want to put in too much of a burden on council and the action that they're talking through. In my career, I have not witnessed this. Now, that being said, I would also offer, it's the first time or first year that in a calendar year, the election is in November as opposed to May. And candidly, this would have been a process that when you started your first day, July 1, we would have had July, August, September, and some other things to kind of work through and talk to you about how things work. And so in this circumstance, maybe while my experience has not given me this, the change that has happened here in the Commonwealth and maybe how that's impacted different localities, maybe in particular Lynchburg, but this is something that hopefully in my experience and career that I'm nimble enough to kind of work through and work together with each of you about. But to answer your immediate question, no, sir. I'm not, in my tenure, looked at that in the middle of the fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor... Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Councilman Doyle, I'm sorry.
I'm sitting back there really quiet.
I'm so sorry.
You know, first, I just want to make a statement that if you don't read anything, economists are really saying now that the housing prices are not going to, they're not going to stay steady, that this is really, really inflated. And I would be surprised if we're looking at a year from now and we're talking about reducing these rates on an ongoing basis. This is not a one-time reduction. But nobody's talking about what services that we have to curtail in order to do this. And I really would like to know. I don't believe I could make a decision on this unless I knew exactly what services we have to cut to our citizens. When you talk about lowering it to 99 cents, that's a big drop. It's a big drop. About one time.
And we've got a budget coming up in two months with the 20% increase. I mean, it's already laid it out pretty easily.
I think this needs to be addressed in the upcoming budget rather than making a decision now to cut taxes.
Okay, so we have an amended, amended motion on the floor.
It sounds like there's a motion to amend the previous motion, basically to adopt this ordinance that's before you, to make it, the first blank being January 24th, 2023, the second blank being 99 cents, third blank there because these are calendar year billings for public service corporations, that'd be 2023. Next blank would also be 2023. Next blank, 2023. Next blank, 2023. And the final blank, 99 cents. So the idea being that it would apply prospectively, 99 cents, and then for public service corporations, retroactively because they haven't been billed yet. So that'll apply back in January. So the question for councils, whether they want to make that amendment.
Okay. I would like to say that I do not appreciate being challenged on my level of courage. I believe, like I said earlier, that we all can deliver on what we've said we would do, and there are different ways to do that. Our Finance Committee made a decision earlier to make this move forward in the next fiscal year budget, which was the original recommendation. We've heard plenty of discussion tonight. A lot of professionals have spoken their minds. There have been plenty of objections as to why certain forms of this may not be the best way to go. So we are going to vote on the current...
One question. Mr. City Attorney, are messages written in writing regarding city business considered public documents?
Yes, if they're created in...
Would notes in meetings be considered public documents?
Yes, they could be, depending on their content.
Would the Councilman Missions feel free to disclose what he wrote on this note to me during this meeting, or should I release it publicly?
I'll do it.
Yeah, so, yeah, what'd you say?
Your write-up.
My priorities are on delivering results, not on making political grandstanding statements. And I hope we can just get to the...
It should be an easy vote.
So the motion on the table is whether to amend, as Councilmember Helgeson had requested. So it's really just that for consideration at this point.
I'll fully request this entire book right there.
We're going to, the motion is that we will lower the tax rate to 99 cents starting today. That's the motion that we're voting on. Go ahead and vote.
Mary, you to vote?
The motion fails, 3-4.
Madam Mayor, I move the pending question on the initial motion.
Pardon?
I move the pending question on the initial motion.
What is that?
So the motion on the table being for staff to use innovative, creative...
I could read it again if you'd like.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The Finance Committee recommends to city council that they direct the city manager to provide creative and effective and legal options for the associated increase with real estate taxes as presented.
Okay, we will now vote on the original motion.
So with that, if I can ask, what does that actually mean? I mean, that's a lot of words that is saying, hey, isn't that what you do in the upcoming budget? Isn't that what you already do? We've got to make a motion that you come up with the budget and think through things? I mean, I don't understand. Is that going backwards, or is that you looking at giving back this unnecessary tax increase, or what? I hear lots of words. I'd like to know what that means.
Yes.
What I took that interpretation to mean, for purposes of the record, is that council would be deferring to their city manager to come up with innovative, lawful, and creative ways to meet what council wants in the upcoming fiscal year in creating financial relief for citizenry. So in 2024's budget, or are we talking about now with these last two years? Starting in July of 2020, this upcoming fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year, the next one. Am I wrong? That's the budget, right? So what's... I have no idea what that actually means to actually do it. It's... Good gosh. Now, that I will not be voting for. Because this, whatever this vote is today, it's not going to change what we're going to be doing with the budget for the 2024, right? The 2024 budget, we're going to be coming up with the budget. You're going to show what the effective increase is in the real estate tax, because as you mentioned, if it goes up 20%, we have to advertise that rate. So we're going to start with the $1.11 rather than starting with 99 cents, and you're coming up with a budget from that? Is that what that's saying?
So the motion is that we are going to vote to allow for the city to have a conversation...
To come up with the budget next year. I'm asking the city managers who I was asking, so if...
Councilman Helgeson, would you read the question, please?
Well, as I read this motion, and it sounds kind of very highly astute and educated, but to me, it sounds like, hey, city manager, come up with the budget for next year. Isn't that what it said? Come up, make sure you use good solutions and think it through. But if we're talking about the fiscal year 2024 budget, that is the whole budget process that the entire council works with, right? Am I seeing something different, or how would you define that differently than the normal budget? Or is that the same?
Madam Mayor?
I'm asking the city manager, so please.
It's my motion.
I was going to say, it is vice mayor's motion. I am interpreting that we're going to walk through the fiscal 24-year budget process to do all the things that we do in a normal budget process.
So this motion is... Yeah, that's what I thought. Motion is dressing.
Vice Mayor Feraldi, would you like to restate your motion, please?
I mean, if I have to, I can go word by word and articulate what it means if they'd like.
Please restate it before we vote, please.
Finance Committee moves to direct the city, recommends Lynchburg City Council direct city staff to provide creative, effective, and legal options for the associated real estate increase as presented. It's pretty straightforward. And I articulated at the outset of this conversation that, yes, this is for the upcoming budget. So everything is clean, and if that means we have to go backwards to make up for what was done wrong under previous councils, I'm okay with that. And moving forward, guys, 99 cents probably won't cut it. This motion does not do anything but a unified gesture by this body telling the city administration what we want them to do moving forward right now. And it was passed on a bipartisan basis, and I firmly believe if we put all personalities aside, this can pass 7-0, no problem. And I humbly ask my colleagues to join me with that.
Again, to me, it sounds like we're looking at the budget. I don't understand that it's any different. You know, when you have, so we're going to have the budget coming forward, and so in the next couple of months, we're going to see a 20% increase in assessed value. So that means we have to lower the tax rate at least 20-some cents just to not have a tax increase. Okay? Then we've got to go back. Is that what we're saying, is say to go back the next, this next year to go back now another $9.6 million from the unnecessary tax increase from the last two years?
Okay.
And two, it's going to be a budget process that we're going to have to work on and adopt, so not in favor of this motion.
We're going to vote, obviously with the goal being that we are planning on delivering some tax relief in this plan. So is everybody ready to vote? Okay, motion passes 5-2. Okay, we have one more item on the agenda that was added at the beginning of the meeting, Agenda Item Number 20. Councilmember Helgeson, would you care to speak on this?
No, I just said I would like this on there. This item, what was Councilmember Missions' letter to the school board, item that was added, where we amended the agenda to add this on to the agenda tonight, which would be V20.
Okay, Item Number 20. Vice Mayor Feraldi, want to speak to that?
I do. I would make a motion to have Lynchburg City Council direct the mayor to draft a letter and send to the school board requesting, I had it written down, requesting them to revisit and reconsider their sexually explicit materials policy.
Okay, is there a second?
For opt-in. Yes, that is correct. Thank you, Andrew.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. And I just want to be clear that it needs to be a firm message that we deliver to the school board, that this body wants, the school board, to put parents first and to empower parents and protect our kids, right? Some of the stuff that's in these books that are funded by public tax dollars sitting in our schools is incredible. Encouraging children to use sex apps for casual hookups. I mean, how much more dangerous does it get than that? That's sitting in an E.C. glass high school right now. It's there. And we need to send a firm message that we're going to empower parents and protect kids. So I hope that this motion passes and that we send a message to the school board.
Thank you, Councilman Missions. Anybody else have any comments? Councilman Wilder?
Again, I just believe this is the issue for the school board. As the gentleman read the quote from the Bible, basically it's saying that we can't let kids read the Bible. So I just need to, I think we're getting too involved into the weeds. We need to let certain administrators, certain police departments handle their areas, and we need to continue to govern. But it helps to have some faith in our leadership teams, that they make some of the best decisions, and we continue to guide them along the way, but have some faith in them. So I think we need to defer this to our school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Who to restate the motion, please?
The motion was to direct me to send a letter to the school board.
Requesting they revisit and reconsider their sexually explicit material policy for opt-in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll offer comments again real quick before we vote, just because earlier in the work session, if you weren't here, I want to redress what I said. I had the pleasure of having really great discussions yesterday with both our superintendent and our chair and vice chair of the school board. And it's been my effort, for those of you who don't know, to work on having great relationships with people across the city and making sure we can engage in civil discourse. I want you to know that I do recognize that the school board is its own entity and that we, as city council, have no right or authority over them, okay? With that said, in our conversations, I did let them know that this had come up, that we had received numerous emails from concerned parents that had sent their concerns to city council, and I was sharing their concerns. They were aware of Councilman Missions' letter or had heard about it. And so through our discussion, they were saying, hey, you know, we're willing to take a look at this. And I did receive an email from Dr. Coleman, the chair of the school board today, and he was thankful for the pleasant conversations we had and said that the Lynchburg City Schools, through our school board, superintendent, and administration and staff are absolutely committed to working with each individual parent regarding concerns pertaining to their children enrolled at LCS. He then wanted me to pass on to everyone who's listening and also to any parent that I encounter, that parents can engage different ways through the superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, the Equity Task Force, Health Advisory Board, Special Education Advisory Committee. They can email, they can call. There's numerous ways they can get in touch. And so we were emailed by concerned parents. I passed that on, and of course, we want to make sure that we let them know they were heard, and we also want to make sure that they know they need to go now to the school board themselves and address them personally and make sure that they know that their concerns have been heard and that the school board has agreed to take a look at this policy again and maybe see if they've missed something or if there's a way that they can change it per these concerns. Now, what has been asked of me is to send a letter on behalf of the council, not ordering, not directing, because we do not have that authority. So I want you to understand that I recognize that. If council asks me to send a letter to the school board saying, hey, here's our thoughts on this as another separate entity, I don't mind doing that, but I want you to know I understand that I do not have, we do not have authority over the school board. So... I will, I just have to go to the vote, but I want to offer that to you, and just wanted to let you know that before we go to the vote, okay? We will...
And I do hope that the letter is basically the letter that we've seen already, you know, so that's what we're, I think, voting for, so at least close to that as possible.
So we are voting now on a letter being sent to the school board from myself on behalf of the council, okay? Okay, passes 5-2. Okay, we are now adjourned. Oh, sorry, Mr. Benda. Oh, yes.
I just want to address the pile of cash. So we're going to take a cash, and I'm going to give it to Donna, she's going to put it in miscellaneous, and then we're going to talk to Dr. Sam about whether or not he wants to offset his real estate bill or something else.
I'm not being funny, I mean, yes, we'd like to...
Okay, we are now adjourned. Our next meeting is February 14th at 4:00 p.m. our work session. Thank you for coming.